I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 13th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Mayor Pro Tim Jeffrey Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Reverend Robert Johnson if he can deliver the prayer tonight.
Shall we bow his? The word of God says, "Without me, you can do nothing." But with you, Lord, we can do all things. We invite you to come in this place and remove us from self and allow your Spirit to lead us in our deliberations, in our thoughts, in all decisions that will be made here. Unite us together as your family. We are your family. We certainly love you. We love our city. We love our citizens, our city officials, and all that involves this historic city. So, Lord, thank you for bringing us a mighty long way, and still yet we have a mighty long way to go in reaching the goals and objectives that you have set in our hearts to accomplish through the leadership of this board and the citizen here. So just have your way. It's all about you and not about us. And we thank you for finding us worthy to symbol together and do the business of this hour. And when we leave here this evening, we will leave in peace and unity to further to make our city a great city to your glory and to your honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Which is one man, the Pledge of Allegiance flag of our country. Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to every republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Third, to call the robe.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris, present. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, the first item tonight is going to be requests and petitions of citizens. I would like to read a comment here. This is an opportunity for public comment, and we thank you for coming to the Board of Alderman meeting tonight to share your views. We value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes during the public comment period. At the conclusion of four minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments will be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. In the board's discretion, it may refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments, which shall be limited to a maximum of four minutes. This is a comment period that we've used this pattern here for many years, and want to take this opportunity to refresh everybody on that. Tonight also, if you have comments under the petitions of citizens, if it pertains to the noise, we're going to be discussing the noise ordinance. We will have a public session, a public input period, and if you want to come up and talk, you can talk during that period. Okay, is anybody else saying anything before we get going with the agenda? At this time, the first petition of citizens tonight is from Anthony Rayner.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Rayner. What I'm here tonight about is a long story. Disturbing starts off with a bridge. It has water circle around it, and we go across it every day. We have schools that's been flooded, that's been put back together, and we still use them. We got a gym that flooded. We gonna throw it in the trash can. But if you think about everything that's happened, it wasn't the gym fault. The fault was the city of New Bern. And why I say the city of New Bern? When you raise a football field to run water down on somebody's property, that's 100% illegal. And that's what we done. On Third Avenue, we ran all that water back all over people. That's not fair. Because when I got there to do my land, the first thing y'all put in my face that I could not build a hill to run back on somebody else's land. And I know for a fact, y'all want to move the gym somewhere else else? If you take time and read, the gym can't be fixed with less money than what y'all see. Because I was in marketing, drafting, and panel development. I can write something or draw something up so to make it work. Saddam my nephew would help me. He's an engineer for panel development for the United States of the Air Force. Graduating number three in the class from NC State. And we done all this discussion together. But when somebody else cause a problem, it's a funny thing. Why all of sudden they want this building to go? But you are willing to take the money and put back in a building that were built probably 80 years ago, and then make it work. I think we looking backwards. 100% backwards. Because if you didn't want to remodel it then, why you want to try to remodel something now? So what I'm saying to the board, if y'all want to tear the building down, sell the building to me. I got 10 people that's involved in the buy. But somebody trying to get the land cheap, that's what I think. But the city of New Bern are responsible for what happened on the streets. I think it should be a $1 billion lawsuit against the city of New Bern for letting somebody build a football field up that high to cause them people to flood. Each one of the people that live on Third Avenue, Second Avenue, where the gym should be reformed with money in their pockets. But nobody thought about it because we only think about ourselves. As long as it's ourselves, it's okay. But when it's somebody else, it's a big problem. So that's what I'm gonna leave you with. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. The next petition is from Curtis Alford.
How y'all doing? My name is Curtis Alford, Sergeant Curtis Alford. I did eight years in the military, four in the Army, four in the Air Force. Ever since I came home, I noticed that for people like me, not only vets, but young black men, have been treated with disrespect and outright racism from the business owners in downtown New Bern and from the New Bern Police Department. Every time we go into a business, they look at us as thugs, rebels, no good people. They cannot use the bathroom or get anything to drink. Same thing with police department. They see us as thugs, as criminals, as outcasts, but nobody's taking the time out to see our side of the story, where we're coming from. Today, I was with my wife. I could rode around 30 minutes trying to find one place to let me use the bathroom and get some water. But because I'm a young black man, they told me they have no public bathrooms. But my wife, who they seen as a young Caucasian, goes into the same place, she's offered use of their facilities, which I think is not fair. And even though I told them, I'm a vet. I served this country for the rights of everybody. I shouldn't be treated like this. No man should be treated like that, black or white. But ever since I came home from overseas, it's all I see is negativity against young black men. They see us as dangerous, which it isn't the case. We're just trying to get by, trying to make it in a world that's hostile toward us. I mean, I know I shouldn't say it, but there are some of my people who brought it on themselves, but for people like me who came from war and have to face this on a daily basis isn't right. And on behalf of the police, every time I'm confronted with the police, I'm treated as a criminal, which shouldn't be the case. And I think it's unfair that anybody in my situation who has fought for this country should be treated this way. And the way I feel, if I had to fight for this country again, I would not do it. That's why I, my wife, we moved up north and I became a Canadian citizen. I gave up my rights to be a citizen of America because I see no fair treatment towards young black men in this country. And I think it needs to change. I don't say that we need to get together and protest like they do with other cities, but something needs to be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next speaker is Maria Cho.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Board, and Staff. I'm Maria Cho, and I reside at 614 Craven Street. I'm here to discuss the ongoing concerns with traffic and pedestrian safety in and around the downtown. In February of 2018, a group of downtown citizens met with the New Bern Police Department to voice concerns over a number of traffic and pedestrian safety issues, including unsafe crosswalks throughout the district, motorists running stop signs, and speeding. In response, in over several months, the police quickly increased enforcement and visibility. Watch Me North Carolina was officially launched. A streetlight was placed at Middle and Broad for increased nighttime visibility for pedestrians and motorists. Traffic calming signals were placed at Broad and Middle Streets, East Front and Pollock Streets, and while they have helped, crossing these intersections remains problematic. Also, they don't allow for safe crossing for citizens with impairments or other disabilities. In early June 2019, a speeding incident on East Front Street resulted in a pet fatality and prompted additional concerns for residents. On June 24, 2019, the downtown citizens again met with the Police Department. Residents reported similar traffic issues that affect pedestrian safety in and around the downtown. For example, failure to yield at the traffic circle, failure to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks, this time Middle and Bear Plaza was one, increase in speed on East Front Street, Craven, George, and Burn Streets, rolling or driving through stop signs, and just an overall increase in aggressive driving throughout the residential and central business districts. On August 5, the Historic Downtown Residents' Association, HYDRA, hosted a special meeting with the New Bern Police Department to discuss and receive follow-up regarding the above issues. And they are always wonderful to work with, just to make a note of that. So some of the short-term solutions that have been employed include increasing enforcement, using message boards, collecting data, especially with speeding. So our last pedestrian plan was completed in June of 2009. So as a citizen, I'm here this evening to build support for long-term change. I'm recommending forming an official pedestrian advocacy committee. In order to accomplish this, the community at large needs the support of three parties: local government staff, including yourselves, the Police Department, Public Works, Planning, and perhaps the North Carolina Department of Transportation, residents and community groups, as well as elected officials. The pedestrian advocacy committee would work to address traffic concerns, promote pedestrian safety, and create a more comfortable, safe, and pleasant environment while walking throughout the city of New Bern. It would advise on roadway projects and policies related to traffic calming, traffic signals, and sidewalk design. It would identify intersections and other locations where it is currently difficult to walk. It would consider all pedestrians, including those visually impaired and persons with disabilities. It would have stakeholder buy-in. Membership would include citizens from all areas of the city. Having a pedestrian advisory committee would help build awareness and eventually allow additional budget allocations for the three Es: enforcement, education, and engineering. It is my hope here this evening that we may begin a conversation to exchange ideas, learn from other communities who have addressed similar concerns, determine top priorities, and strategically plan for creating a safer and more walkable city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick comment. I would like to invite all the Alderman just to think about if you want to start one in your community, or if you have citizens to get them in touch with Mrs. Cho, because I think it would be a good thing to do, to engage all our citizens.
My next petition is Mr. James Woods.
Good afternoon, morning. James Woods, 1903 Country Club Road. Last month, one of you made a comment about how our communities are the hub and heartbeat of our city. And I'm here this evening to talk about the Dryboro-Douphill area. If that is the case, and I do agree with that, I believe our communities are the heartbeat of our city. Well, we, the residents or participants of the Dryboro-Douphill area, would like to know what's going on with Stanley White. I do appreciate what the board has done to make arrangements for the kids to go over to the Omega Center, but the Omega Center is not Stanley White. Stanley White is the heartbeat of the Dryboro-Douphill area. Please, 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 do something about that. All summer, the kids in that area didn't have a place to go. They can't get over to West New Bern because their parents are at work, or it costs money during the day for them to go to camp. But if you had that center, that center is the heartbeat of that neighborhood, and that neighborhood is going down because that center is not functionable. We need to do something about Stanley White. I understand that there's legal processes and things of that nature, but something's got to be done because that neighborhood is suffering because that center is not available for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next petition is Mr. Randy Foster.
Hi, Randy Foster, 1322 Spencer Avenue. Three years ago, my then 11-year-old son started playing basketball. We put a basketball court in our backyard, and every now and then his ball would bounce into the street. We live in a residential area. In most residential areas, that's no big deal. In his case, he nearly got run over countless times, to the point where I said, "Your ball's not worth it. You let it bounce into the street, I'll get it." Well, I'm not here to speak about myself. I'm here to speak about my neighbor, Benjamin Whitford, who has two daughters who are younger than my son. He couldn't be here tonight, so I told him that I would read his letter into the record for him. "My name is Benjamin Whitford. My wife, children, and I live at 1323 Rem Avenue on the corner of Rem Avenue and Second Street. I wish I was able to be with you. However, I have other obligations, and Randy, my neighbor, has been kind enough to relay my thoughts. Thank you for considering adding Second Street to the list of restricted streets in the city code of ordinances for tractor-trailers. It's a step in the right direction. Tractor-trailers have no place using Second Street as a cut-through to and from Trent Boulevard from Highway 70. I would like to clearly distinguish Second Street from our neighboring Rem Street, which is contained entirely within a commercial zone between Park Avenue and First Street slash Country Club Road," which, interestingly enough, was originally named Pembroke Road. "Over the last year or so, I have documented tractor-trailers repeatedly using this route with photos on Gent's webpage on a community website, nextdoor.com. If you are not familiar with it, I encourage you to check it out. I am aware America depends on truckers and tractor-trailers, and I salute them. However, 80,000-pound tandem axle tractor-trailers need to use appropriate corridors. Second Street is not one of them. Second Street is 100% residential neighborhood side street and has not been treated that way. On that fact, I hope we will all agree. During last month's traffic count conducted by the New Bern Police Department, the study's daily average was 947 vehicles per day. 947 zoning designation the Gent neighborhood falls under, including Second Street. This evening, I would like to encourage you to take concrete measures to help promote all cut-through traffic, including tractor-trailer drivers, to choose appropriate routes instead of inappropriately using Second Street. I am not suggesting closing the street. I'd like to point out for the record, when the barricades were installed for seven days or so, the street was never actually closed. It was open, useful, and accessed from multiple directions in streets, just not Trent Boulevard. What I am suggesting is along the lines of adding a roundabout or something similar at Park Avenue and Rem Street, or on Second Street, simply adding a couple raised pedestrian crossings or a couple of speed bumps. The objective is to reduce the traffic density of cut-through traffic on Second Street. Also, these measures would be beneficial to alert drivers who are unaware that they are on a residential street within a neighborhood, not a through affair, as currently suggested by the gradual redesign, benefiting the commercial zone preferences at the expense of Second Street residences. Perhaps that should have been considered more during the planning process. The options I suggest have very low initial costs and have extremely long-term maintenance costs, extremely low long-term maintenance costs. They are completely within reason." And he goes on and forth, and I have 18 seconds left, so I will submit this to your city clerk for director.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Penalty for knocking the Bible?
Not from us.
Now go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Motion second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is presentation of 2019 Beautification Awards by the Appearance Commission. The Appearance Commission annually recognizes business owners and residents in various locations within the city for their beautification efforts of the properties that they own. Winner in both categories is chosen from each ward, and awards will be presented to those who are in attendance with us tonight. There's memos, including a packet from Mr. Hughes, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Foster, who is going to show a PowerPoint presentation sharing pictures of the winning properties throughout the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Okay, we've got Joseph Cannon. He's our Chair of the Appearance Commission. We also have Jim Duggan, who is our Vice Chair. Would you like to come up as well? And we've also got Mike Duffy. I think they will be part of the certificate ceremony. So we'll give them a second, and then we'll get started.
Hello and welcome. We, as the Appearance Commission, would like to thank everyone who participated this year in our 2019 Beautification Awards. We will be awarding each ward based on a residential and non-residential winner. Non-residential includes churches, businesses, parks, et cetera. After your name is called, please stand up here. We will have all the winners up here, and I appreciate you guys all. Thank you for all your hard work. Ward one residential, Hugh Mills. Ward one non-residential, First Baptist Church. Ward two residential, Jackie Long. Ward two non-residential, Carolina East Medical Center. Ward three residential, Peter and Maria Farkas. Ward three non-residential, Taberna HOA. Ward four residential, Gary Spung. Ward four non-residential, Brookdale Senior Living. Ward five residential, John and Joy Lee. Ward five non-residential, National Cemetery. Ward six, Mr. and Mrs. Carroll. Non-residential Ward six, the Jessup Group. That is all of our winners for this year. Thank you very much for your participation.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number eight is a presentation of the longevity certificates. As we do twice a year, employment services recognized at five-year increments. Roster's been enclosed in your packet. That includes all employees who are eligible to receive a service certificate for the period of January through June 2019. Some of the employees are here with us tonight, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hayes, who is going to recognize these employees who have service certificates awarded during this period. If the board would also like to come down, we'd like for y'all to shake the hand of the employees and their service commitment to the city. Thank you.
Okay, so without further delay, we will get started. Tonight, we have a few employees with us, as the city manager said, who we'd like to recognize for their dedication in reaching the longevity milestone. So we'll start with the certificate of service for John E. Best, Police Department, and appreciation of five years of valuable service. of five years of valuable service. Next, we would like to recognize Jennifer El Mayo, Development Services Department, five years of valuable service. Kevin D. Lee, Police Department, ten years of valuable service. Next, we'll recognize William Hollowell Jr., Police Department, and appreciation of fifteen years of valuable service. Trent A. Jarman, Fire Department, and appreciation of fifteen years of valuable service. We'd like to recognize Tommy E. Jenkins, Public Works Department, fifteen years of valuable service. Stacy A. Lewis, Fire Department, and appreciation of twenty years of valuable service. We'd also like to recognize James P. McConnell, Fire Department, and appreciation of twenty years of valuable service. Are there any other employees or retirees with us tonight who expect to be recognized?
We got a third year's term?
We're gonna give a third. Jeff Holzbach, Development Services, fifteen years of valuable service. Anyone else? Okay, Mayor, this concludes our present- Thank you. This concludes our presentation, Mayor, and as usual, we have cookies, and we would like to recess for just a minute.
I want to give a motion to recess.
Much to say recess, or, much to say aye?
Aye.
We're going to go to item number nine now, the presentation of the Craven County's new recycling program. Would you like to come up and give us your presentation?
Mark, can you tell us what this is again?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so, Mayor, this is Norma Inez. She's our government's contracts manager for Waste Industries. As many of you know, Waste Industries, actually, the county recycling program is shifting to a once-per-month cycle, instead of a once-per-week cycle. However, don't be alarmed, you will have a very large container, it's a ninety-six-gallon container.
Ninety-six gallons, that's right.
A ninety-six-gallon container that will be used for your recycling, and will be picked up once a month. But without stealing all of Norma's thunder, I will turn it over to her, so that she can kind of detail a little bit about this program and the rollout.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody again. I have Brigham Young with me tonight, BC is our general facility manager, right across the river over there, tries to take as good a care of you as he knows how. I'm here tonight, I just wanted to do a courtesy update about the county program. I can't really give you all full specifics, because the county board has to vote on a lot of the handouts and things on Monday, so I'm not allowed to hand those out quite yet, just in case there's some changes made between now and Monday. The reason why I came so early is because we're actually going to start delivering carts the week of August the twenty-sixth, so I didn't have another week to come back to address you before the carts got delivered, so that's why I'm here today. The actual service date, the first week of service for the carts, is going to be October the seventh. Everyone, even though if you get your cart over the next four weeks, we just actually ask you to continue using your eighteen-gallon bins that you have. The first full week of October seventh, we will no longer pick up any of those eighteen-gallon bins in Ichum. The only thing that we're going to empty is those ninety-six-gallon carts. The carts are very visible, they're lime green with a black top. We're having recycle-only hot stamped on the lids with a list of items that you can recycle, as a quick reference to people that are, want to know what they can recycle. As you can imagine, forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty, or whatever the number is, we have to deliver, it's going to take a while, that's why we're starting so early. We are paying a professional company to deliver these carts. This is all they do for a living all over the United States. They will end up with a list that's got longitude, latitude, side every address, of every serial number of every cart that's delivered, and it's, you know, you're looking at a quarter million dollars just to deliver these carts. So, we are trying to do it in a very professional way. The trucks that we'll be getting, we're getting three new trucks. I think they're going to be here September the tenth, and you'll not miss those either. They'll be lime green, you'll never miss those, but the point is, they're brand-new automated trucks. So, we're starting this program with everything brand-new. I did bring a little brochure, you know, at some of the meetings I've been to, a lot of people are concerned that it's really hard to tell what to deliver, I mean, what to recycle and what not to recycle, and this is, these are the ones that we had, and I think they're approved, so if anybody would like to see one of these, I'd be glad to, BC can hand them out. They're a little more specific, and they really address a lot about not using plastic bags, things that you keep out of your recycle bin. So, when we deliver the carts, this will be in the cart, a calendar will be in the cart, how to put your bin out next to the road will be in the cart, there'll be a whole lot of information delivered with the cart, as well as, all of these items will be listed on the Craven County website. We are also working on a link that is going to be on the Craven website. If you get all confused about what day your cart is to be serviced, first of all, everything is going to be in a zone, so you have red, blue, yellow, and green, because it's every four weeks that you get serviced. I think just about all of New Bern will be under the same zone, so that'll be really convenient. But also, it'll have the day of the week that you know to put it out. So, if you've got a green decal with a Monday on yours, that means you look at your calendar, if it's a green week, you put your cart out on Mondays. It's very simple. Having said that, we're trying to, we're getting together a program where you can enter your address in on the website, and it'll tell you as well. So, if you get confused, and you just can't figure out, and you'd rather go online and put your address in, it'll tell you as well. That probably won't start probably until later after the initial program starts, it's going to take us a while, you can imagine. We've gotten all kinds of lists from the counties, from the county, because we have apartments, we have some businesses that participate in their program, mobile home parks, all kinds of things, so we're sorting this out as we go. We're trying to leave a whole week before the program actually starts to clean up any problems that were left over from the initial delivery of the carts. Having said that, just so you'll know, there are businesses other than what's in this county program that pay us commercial service. They are once a week, so you'll still see quite a few businesses in New Bern will still have once-a-week service. That's because they're not in this Craven County program. They're commercial businesses that want us to pick them up once a week. So, if you see the truck going through your neighborhood once a week, it's because we have a commercial route, there's probably four hundred or so in Craven County, and you can imagine, a lot of those are in the city of New Bern. Apartments, we are going to the apartment complexes and meeting with them one-on-one, and addressing the once-a-month issue with those people. For example, if they don't want a hundred carts picked up once a month, we're offering to give them a limited number and pick those up once a week, if that's what they would like to do. Say, for example, they have a hundred units, we'll provide them up to twenty-five and pick them up once a week for them, and we'll keep those separate, but we're willing to work with any of the apartment complex, multifamily housing, any of those kind of situations, and we do have someone assigned to go in to visit all those. We have to give a list back to the county that we've visited everyone, so we will be doing that as well. So, that'll generate another, you know, set of once-a-weeks that are in the city. If you happen to drive through the town of Bridston, Bridston is not in this contract at all, they'll still be using their eighteen-gallon bins once a week until their contract expires. I think they have another year, we're honoring our, we always honor our contracts, they have once-a-week with eighteen-gallon bins that was different than the county contract, so they still will be allowed to use their eighteen-gallon bins for the remainder of their contracts. Like I said, on the carts themselves, they'll have a nice colored decal on them, it'll either be red, blue, green, or yellow, it'll have the day of the week stamped, and there'll be some reference on it as well, as you look at your calendar, you know, and you'll figure it out. The eighteen-gallon bins that they have now around town, everybody's welcome to keep them, so if they want them, they're welcome to keep them. They're good for storing things in your garage, for leaving it in your house, to bring it outside, to dump it, you know, the materials into your big container, whatever you want to use them for, we do not care. If you do not want them, and you want them recycled, we ask you to take them to the convenience sites. The convenience sites are going to be very important to everyone, part of the fee that everyone's going to be paying pays for those convenience sites, in case you didn't know it in the first place. But that yearly property assessment fee that they put on everybody's property taxes, that pays for part of those, it's not just this recycle program. So, you know, if you've got an overload of cardboard, if you've got an overload of other materials that you want recycled, you're still free to, it's all included, take the items to the convenience sites, as well as these eighteen-gallon bins. They're going to collect them over there, and somebody comes to the site, and they have a need, oh, I would like to have ten of your bins, for whatever the reason, as long as they're using them, then the county will let them have them. If you just don't want to take them over there, you just don't want it anymore, we just ask that you leave it out empty on your day of trash service, and we'll pick it up with the trash. We have no method of picking up the forty-five or fifty-five thousand, or however many are out there, and to be able to recycle them, so that's what happens on your existing bins. Like I said, it's every, once every four week, not once a month, and I know that's kind of confusing, but they are fifty-two weeks in the year, and we wanted to, you know, we didn't want, once a year, you'd have to go five weeks, so that's what the county chose, was the once-every-four-weeks program. Craven County will finalize a lot of this material at their board meeting on Monday, and they have already working on an extensive program or promotion for press releases and items on their websites. Rusty Cotton is going to groups and giving presentations, we did the TV program for the county, C-ten TV program, and did interviews, and we're going to be doing a lot of that between now and October the seventh. So, between what the county is doing and what we're doing in conjunction with the county, all the information will be on their county website and links, but hopefully, it won't be too painful when it starts, but with this many customers it's going to be, there's going to be a hiccup here and there. But BC himself, he's going out to some of the places here in town, he's met with Public Housing to try to make sure that they're taking care of what they want, and we're going to try to meet again with, forgive me for remembering her name, Swiss Bear Lady, to make sure she's all happy with and confident with all of what she has in her area. So, we are making a concerted effort to visit everybody that needs a visitor.
Ms. Norma, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since it's a four-week hiccup, every four-week, are the citizens allowed to crush the cans and crush the bottles and stuff to make more room, since it's four weeks?
In the last six months, I have gotten probably to know more about recycling and that kind of thing than I really ever thought I ever wanted to know. You're welcome to crush everything, but the way that the conveyor belt systems are made these days, paper is the first thing that gets blown off of them, so if you crush your can so flat that it's almost flat as a piece of paper, then it'll be blown off with the paper, so you wanted to leave it to have a little bit of dimension, I mean, you can crush it down, but just let it stick up a little bit, you know, and the same way with the bottles and things. And actually, the materials that we're going to, we agreed to pick up to start with, it's more items than what we had said to begin with, and what the county has done is we've got the hot stamp on the lid, and it's very general. Until the processor tells us different, we're going to pick up whatever the processor pays, but that was a big item of contention, oh, you're not going to pick up all these things, but the processor takes it. Well, if that processor picks it up, it's going to be on this list, and it go in that container, and we'll take it and we'll recycle it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Really appreciate your presentation.
Just one more thing, and you might realize this, and nobody ever worried about it much before, but just as a general rule, we really never cared if anybody rinsed anything out, but it might be on the lid, it'll remind you to rinse some things out, that you don't want to sit there in your cart for four weeks, you know, just as a general rule, so, you know, you don't have to, if it's coarse water bottles and things, but if you've got something, I don't know, pickled shrimp or something, you know, it might behoove you to rinse that jar out, but we made these recommendations on the cart lid, as well as on the flyers that we're giving out, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, this is item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is a discussion of and public input on noise ordinance. After some concerns were expressed about noise in and around our city limits at various locations, there's been multiple meetings that have been held with citizen input and business input, and what is before you tonight is a, I guess, a final draft of an ordinance after a collection of data by some of our staff and businesses and homeowners and stuff, and there was a discussion in multiple settings for these meetings about what the decibel levels needed to be, what the location needed to be, where the measurement is taken, so forth and so on. So, at this time, this is before y'all for consideration and direction to me as the City Manager and staff, if you wish to move on creating this new draft into a final city ordinance, we will be happy to do that. So, at this time, I open the floor up to you.
We look forward to the citizens' input. I think we want to clarify, too, that we had a city ordinance in place that did not require the use of a decibel reader, so it was really subjective on the part of the officer, the patrolman that came out and was addressing the complaint, and we had concerns from citizens that they wanted something more subjective, that would be, you know, being able to see a number, or how it was read, take away the zones, the zones were an issue, so this is the result of many conversations, and I want to thank Kathy Adolf for bringing both groups together and getting the citizens organized. I appreciate the efforts on the citizens' part. Mr. Watson's been very involved, and several other citizens, and also Jennifer Zerby in trying to make this happen, so I think it's important now that we hear what the citizens have to say.
At this time, if anybody from the public would like to come up and make any comments concerning this item, you're more than welcome to do that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Lonnie, John Watson, two seventeen Middle Street. I'd like to read my presentation for the record, please. I and the affected citizens of the C-one, C-two district have been given the current draft ordinance for review. Our complaint continues to be the noise heard inside our residences every weekend while trying to sleep. After reviewing the draft and meeting with most of you, it's blatantly obvious that no one is concerned in the city about eliminating unwanted disturbing amplified music from our citizens' bedrooms that occurs year-round every weekend. And further, there's an article in the draft similar to the current ordinance that prevents law enforcement from supporting the welfare of the citizenry and the individual's right to peaceful and quiet enjoyment, as stated in page one, section twenty-six, sixty-six, statement and purpose of the intent, paragraphs A and B. I'll read those for you. It's recognized that the above certain levels and durations during specific times of the day, unreasonably loud and disturbing noise is detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the citizenry, and the individual's right to peaceful and quiet enjoyment. It's further recognized that a substantial body of science and technology exists by which unreasonably loud and disturbing- of science and technology exists by which unreasonably loud and disturbing noise may be measured and substantially abated. Item B of section one, these, this provision here under contained or enacted by the purpose of preventing noise disturbances or unreasonably loud noise and are enacted pursuant to the authority granted in, whatever that means. It is the policy of the city to prohibit noise disturbances or unreasonably loud noise from all sources subject to its police power in order, in order to secure and promote the public health, comfort, convenience, safety, welfare, prosperity of the citizens of New Bern. And I address, I direct you to page two, the definition of noise in this ordinance. Any sound or combination of sounds which because of its volume or quality tend to disturb reasonable persons of normal sensitivity or to interfere with normal human behavior, unreasonable person of normal sensitivity. And that would, in our case, that would mean sleep. It's disturbing our sleep, big time. Page seven, section twenty-six dash seventy, loud disturbing noises prohibited. Of specific interest to this case is paragraph B, number three. Playing of any radio, phonograph, CD player, computer-generated and/or amplified sound amplifier, television, tape deck, tape recorder, musical instrument, or any other electronically created or amplified sound equipment in such a manner as, or which, or with which volume during the nighttime hours as to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of any person or persons in a dwelling, hotel, motel, or other type residence. Continuing on through the list of prohibited noises to paragraph C of the same section, I'll read that for you. Loud disturbing noises prohibited. Paragraph C eliminates any individual's right to peaceful and quiet enjoyment by connecting it to a dB level and not the reasonable man standard discussed in the noise definition and the statement of intent. That's very important. It takes it away from the citizen to complain about noise in the bedroom or anywhere else in their, inside their residence. This is an exact reversal of the stated intent of the ordinance on page one that I just read. The state of North Carolina is, has defended individuals' rights to peaceful and quiet enjoyment, quiet enjoyment of their residence. And I don't understand how this body has such a difficulty doing so. I don't care what goes on downtown, on the streets, as long as I don't hear it in my bedroom. That's the bottom line. You know, I love music like anybody else does. I was in a band when I was a lot younger than I am now. I played music. I enjoy music. I still enjoy music. I just don't want to hear it in my bedroom. I've had to put pillows in my windows to keep, to be able to sleep. I've had to change, change bedrooms to be able to sleep. Not that hard to fix. We've been forced to, to alter our lifestyle and often change bedrooms, like I just said, almost every weekend to enable sleep prior to eleven P.M. I go to bed early and wake up early most days, so. But we, we just need to be able to sleep. That's, that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come up and make any comments? You're welcome to do that.
Hi. Jennifer Zerby, I'm General Manager at Blackbeards. And I'm going to read my prepared statement if that's okay. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for your time and effort that has gone into creating an ordinance that works for both residents and businesses alike. Mr. Stevens, thank you for mediating numerous meetings between the residents and business owners and the, and managers. Mr. Davis, I really do appreciate all the hours you've logged in regards to not only the ordinance, but parking as well. We'll throw that in real quick. Ms. Banjo, I cannot tell you how thankful I am for you. Fielding calls left and right over the past year has probably ruined your sleep schedule for many years to come. As well as Mr. Mayor and the rest of the aldermen, Ms. Best, Mr. Astor, Ms. Best, Ms. Harris, Mr. Odom, thank you for everything, because I know that you hear this a lot. The definition lifted in, listed in the draft ordinance for steady-state sounds reads that sound exists twenty-five percent of any one measurement interval. A measurement interval is continuous period of fifteen seconds or three point seven five seconds. This is my only issue with this, is that I'm very thankful that there's something in, in the, a line in the sand, so to speak, that there's something that we can all know that we, we need to meet these guys, not just to, you know, operate a business, but to ensure that the downtown stays vibrant and growing and due to the fact that it's a mixed community that everybody can kind of learn to live together. I think that's an issue we have. So again, I guess, the, I guess what I'm stating is that after reading number seven in the measurement period where it says a minimum of two sound readings for any duration of fifteen seconds per reading within a two-minute period, that the highest sound level captured during any fifteen-second reading within that period should be considered the purpose, the sound level for purposes of compliance. And the reason, the only reason that I have an issue with that is because what if you start measuring sound for two minutes? And within that two minutes, you have such, an example like I have, or slamming of a car door, a scream or shout from a pedestrian, or a truck where the lift has not been completed, you know, the Carolina swap. We all know that that truck is very loud. So if that drives by, are we going to be held accountable for that noise as well? Or God knows, it's motorcycle season, so there's a lot of motorcycles out. These guys are out all times of day. So at that point, if one drives by, is, is that what we're going to be held to as well? I know that in one of our meetings, the chief had stated that we were going to go to a peak. And while I agree with that, I was looking at Raleigh's and it was, they did a hundred readings with ten of those readings being out of, out of compliance. I think that that two-minute period with reaching a peak is just, it's not, it's not feasible. It's, it's not. My husband is so yelling at me for this right now. But I think that after over a year, I think that what we currently have in place and what you have proposed is, is a great start. Like, and I know that it's going to be revisited in six months to a year because I know that the complaints are never going to stop. It's always going to happen, whether it's a business that wants to be louder or a resident that wants it to be quieter. And there's always going to be that. And I hope that as a community, we're able to come together and have these meetings and come to a decision that, you know, is beneficial to everybody. Not necessarily to make everybody unhappy, but to make us all happy and want to, want to do business and continue to do business in downtown New Bern. I think that by putting this ordinance in place, it also opens the door for new businesses to come downtown because they're going to know what the standard is and what, what they need to meet and their expectations, if you could say that. So in closing, I guess at the end, I would just like to thank you for your, for your time and your patience. And I know that it's been trying and troubling. And I really am looking forward to a resolution, mostly so I can stay out of court.
Thank you.
Are there others that would like to come up and make any comments concerning this item, noise ordinance? Okay. So now this, back and forth discussion, and I don't think we're going to take any action tonight. Just want to give the public an opportunity to.
Take comments. And if you want to give direction to the city manager after you've heard the comments one way or the other, then he would work with the city manager to bring, bring us back a draft or bring us back a, you know, an ordinance that we would actually vote on.
Okay. Is there anything else on this item?
I've just asked a question about the, there was some conversation about numerous meetings that took place. It was my understanding that this ordinance that's in front of us now was somewhat agreed upon by both parties. I don't know that that's necessarily, we've heard two comments tonight, and it sounds like to me that they each have some issues with this. Obviously, I understand, been here six years, you're not going to make everybody happy. I get that. But was it the general consensus of the groups that came together that this was where we were going to start?
Yes. Actually, whenever we met the first time, there were multiple representatives from the residential district. There was also representatives from the business side of things. And we, at that first meeting, determined that we would take measurements over about a month period, which our police department did. They purchased and now have a decibel reading piece of machinery or device, whatever you want to call it. And so throughout that next month, they took measurements, beginning sometime right after the fourth, the holiday of the fourth, and started taking measurements. And at that time, there was a secondary meeting that we followed up on, on the twenty-third of July. Once again, representatives from the residential area as well as the business area attended those meetings. And actually, the recommendation, if I recall correctly, was made by Chris Mealy from the residential district that we move forward with the draft resolution or draft ordinance that's in front of you tonight. And that was mutually agreed upon at that meeting. And that is the reason why we're here tonight. As promised, we would bring that to the board. And that's what I told them at this meeting, there would be follow-up discussion and opportunities for the public to have input. So as far as what we have done, we have fulfilled all of the things that we obligated ourselves to do. And that's the reason why we're here tonight, to just receive the public comment and also bring it before the board for your consideration and direction.
Odom and Odom.
And that's just the two meetings.
This is citywide. This is not just going to be downtown. This will be in effect citywide.
And, and this, this is, you know, these are the two meetings that I was involved in finalize, trying to get to some resolution of agreement or finalization, as you said. And the famous words of Scott, sometimes our job is to make everybody equally unhappy. And, and this is one of those cases where you're just, it's probably impossible to make everyone in the city happy because everybody's sensitivities and, and reasonableness, as it was read by Mr. Watson, that's, that's something that is, is different and subjective to all. So it's a very, it's a very difficult subject to reach some resolution, but ultimately we wanted to get there. The final thing that was also promised out of that meeting was that this would be revisited in six to twelve months after it kind of was implemented to see how it was going. And, and we will continue to read and measure throughout those periods as well at periodic times, whenever events are going on. So that was, that was what came out.
Captain.
To Jen and Dale's benefit, we, one of those meetings, the first meeting, I believe, I missed the second meeting. But our, we had a discussion about doing something to abate the sound that comes right out the side of the stage, down the parking lot beside the Wells Fargo Bank, and it echoes down the hall right into my bedroom window. That's the only issue that I have. And it comes right into my bedroom window because of all the concrete and hard surfaces in the area. The seventy dB level was never agreed upon by, by me or anybody in my group. Chris Neely doesn't, doesn't really live downtown all the time, but seventy dB sounds good if you're talking about birds and animals in the trees. But when you give a bird a bass drum or a bass guitar, that changes big time. The spikes are the, are the, what the big issue are. And I, my building is seventeen inches thick. And like I said, I have to put pillows in the window. I'm currently having some one-inch-thick glass made for my back windows and hopefully that'll help. And Jen mentioned the fact that maybe they can put up a ten-foot fence with some of the fake greenery like the Maola Rep center uses, and that would break up the sound. I'm sure that would solve the issue that, that I have. But the other issue going forward is the back, right now, the backside of Sky Sale is ninety percent unoccupied. When that becomes occupied, you're going to have a big problem on your hands because all those people will be getting a full blast. And this past weekend, Saturday was beautiful, great music quietly played. Friday, on the other hand, was increasingly, just crazy loud. It's just, there's no, there's no plateau. There's no rhyme or reason. It's just, one day it's great, one day it's terrible. So I don't know what it's going to take to make it better, but I'm just about at my rope's end. And I'm, spring, I think you know that.
I do.
Okay. Got right on.
Well, I had not intended to speak tonight, but I do want to clarify some of my understandings from the last meeting in which the city manager and city attorney were present because they are not exactly the same. After the first meeting that the city manager attended, and I think I have been at almost all of the meetings in the last year and a half, at the request of the aldermen in the first ward, I assisted citizens in coming together with petitions. As you know, I have spoken before this board on various occasions. And I think my point of view has been rather clearly stated, which is why I didn't think I would speak tonight. But following the meeting, when the city manager came to the table, apparently urged by members of this board to bring parties together after a year and a half, and having, after the first meeting, not had any correspondence with the city, I followed up the meeting with a memo, which I think I copied to all of you. In it, it said, "Manager Jennifer Zerby and sound specialist Norm McCollum with the entire group discussed a variety of ideas to address abatement of amplified sound on the outdoor patio at Blackbeards." And before going further, I want you to know that during those meetings, we all expressed, and I want to express publicly, our great support for Jennifer and the work that she has done at Blackbeards with regard to this issue. It, she has done an extraordinary yeoman's job in getting decibel levels over many, many months. I hold her in huge regard. This weekend, and that was, Ms. Zerby indicated that she would set up staging areas for a band facing towards the river. We were all brainstorming ways to mitigate sound towards Union Point, what's that, Union Point Park? Am I doing something bad?
Too close to the mic.
Step away. Is that good?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Because most of the sound, from the sound specialist who was present, would go past, go down towards Union Point Park where there are not many residences actually. So it's all about how sound travels and how it gets recorded. I must say, Jen was extraordinarily supportive of doing any and all kinds of things possible to mitigate the sound. We talked about the need to work with the Historic Preservation Commission to address design issues, not only current ones, but those going forward and possibly looking at what the commission could do to work with businesses to, I guess I'd say, be more flexible in exterior design so that sound is mitigated, so that music plays loudly for the businesses and doesn't disturb the residences. It was decided that, at that meeting, that the city manager would confirm that the decibel reader purchased by the city, New Bern Police Department, was capable of measuring the decibel level at a steady sound state, which is volume, that it also is capable of measuring pascals, which is the measurement of sound pressure. And that's what you hear in boom, boom of a bass, which is very different from a decibel reading, and that the data could be easily downloaded by our law enforcement, police department, to computers for analysis. So we were discussing issues not only of recording sound, but also what was going to be needed by law enforcement to make it easy to analyze data. So it wasn't a complicated, I mean, life needs to be simple. I mean, you know, we, we live in this huge technological era with all this stuff and it's overwhelming and we needed, and so I want you to know that we had those conversations with the police department on various occasions and including the last meeting. It was then decided by that group at the first meeting that the manager was at to collect data on Friday and Saturday evenings while bands were playing downtown using the following parameters. The police department would use the certified dB reader collecting dB and pascal levels a hundred feet from the source of the sound. And that was a clear consensus by the group, collecting data from the source of the sound. And I'll come back and talk about why that changed because of a legal matter that the city attorney said would not hold up in court. that the city attorney said would not hold up in court. And so the data collection would begin as soon as possible because the group was going to meet a month later. Residents Watson, Adolf, and Mealy will be attentive to noise during the evenings on Friday and Saturday that the police department would collect those readings. It would be helpful if the police department would confirm all parties on those evenings. And we suggested that somebody be at the residence's location while decibel levels were taken on the street to see if, in fact, a 70 dB level, which is what the city had wanted to put in the ordinance, would not create a disturbance to residences, in this case, on Middle Street, sleeping in their bedroom. I mean, it would have been a very simple thing, and that was decided. Those things did not happen. It was noted by residents during the meeting that the sound level of the band's playing on June 22nd, while audible to residents, was quite acceptable. And so we were very hopeful at that first meeting with the city manager that we would come to a consensus at the next meeting. When those things, when that data collection didn't occur, and while the police certainly followed the directives that they had been given, but not what the consensus of that first meeting was, I have to tell you, it created a sense of lack of confidence, a distrust of, isn't that what was said at the first meeting? And how is it that the second meeting didn't, didn't realize that? And so, to the point of, was there consensus? I think the group really, I'll speak for myself, gave up. And it's clear that, as we've spoken in the past, there's not an appetite by the Board of Aldermen to do other than this, that it makes sense. And so in a year, it was, it was stated, decided perhaps, that this ordinance will be revisited. But I am sad that there was not a process by the city, not the citizens, but from the top levels of management of this city, to put together a schema for understanding this data. I don't think it is a citizen's responsibility to do that, although you've got lots of citizens in this city who are willing to help, and probably a pain in the butt to many of you in that help. But that's all I want to say. And again, I wasn't going to say anything because I know that this will be passed at the next meeting. And I guess we'll have to see where it goes. And I don't know if, how it will play out. I guess we'll all see.
Ms. Kathy, I have a question. Based on what you were saying, what was, what do you feel a decibel limit should be for residential?
Jen, I don't know. You know, I don't know, which is why I needed to be secure in being able to say to this board, 70, and the sound, you know, the sound specialist who was at the last two meetings said, and I asked him directly, is 70 out of line? And he said, probably not, probably not. But I want to be confident that, so I can't say, I can't, whoops, put my seal of approval on that to say to you that it makes sense. If I know that I have friends and residents who live in the downtown area in proximity of all the bars and taverns and music and all the fun that we love to have, if they can't sleep in their bedroom, if they can't. And so all I needed to do was to have somebody from the city in those residences while somebody on the street was taking that decibel level reading. And if it was fine, it was fine. And, you know, the past ordinance had, was it audible? Well, music is audible, we get that, you know, it's fine. We don't care about it being audible. What residents care about is, is it unduly loud? Does it, I mean, if you don't live down here, and you get to go home, and you get to sleep in your bed, and it's not a problem, then you probably don't care. But if you do live in this city and love the vibrancy and love the music and want to support the businesses, we've got to know that. And so that's the only piece that for me, I mean, I was, we were close, but no cigar for me. So I, it is my impression that the board will go forward and approve this. So to my point, it's not my job to know the decibel level that's appropriate. I have raised these questions for over a year and a half. So my question is, how does the board know that that decibel level is appropriate and that people can sleep in their bedrooms in residences downtown? Other questions?
Do we have some, obviously, we're a unique city. We have our unique circumstances and challenges.
We do.
There are also historic cities in eastern North Carolina that have to deal with the same problem. Do we have that benchmark data on what that looks like that could be supplied to us?
It was passed around too many meetings ago to the board, and a chart.
And that was the 70?
That was the board.
75 and 80. The more modern ones, the more recent ones are much higher. We just tried to split the difference when we looked at the decibel levels. We just tried to look at all the decibel levels out there and go down the middle as a starting point.
Is it, is it more of the decibel level or is it the time standpoint? Because Mr. Watson mentioned going to sleep at night, it was fine during the week, and it's different on the weekend. Is it the extra hour of time? Is it the time?
I think businesses need, you know, they want to. But the truth of the matter, people are going to be out partying till, I mean, probably. And businesses need to engage that way. So, you know, more restrictions obviously make for more peaceful things, but that's not where probably good management heads. To the point of where other cities have cut decibel levels, I know Beaufort was one of the examples that the city attorney brought up in the last meeting. I think there are very strident differences between Beaufort and New Bern. Almost all of Beaufort's downtown is commercial. It is surrounded by residential houses and apartments and boats and all those things. That is not the case of how this city was created 300 years ago with residents and the shopkeepers below in harmony. So, and we're not a college town. Been there, done that. I get partying seven days a week as a college kid. And those decibel levels may be different in some of those towns. So I think one has to really take a look at their, the environment in which they are creating laws and these ordinances for the specific municipality in which we live.
I have another question. This is for Ms. Jennifer. Can you come to my room, please? I didn't go to the meetings. I allow Ms. Bingle to handle that because that's her warden. If I had any questions, I would go to her. My question is, because I am someone that goes downtown and enjoys the music, and I understand that it's to 11 o'clock on weekends. What would be an issue with the time changing to 10 o'clock and the outside band coming inside? What's the drawback to trying that for six months?
Is a loss of income, a loss of, a loss of sales, is what I do believe. Because on, you know, Friday nights, I mean, normal, and I hate to say normal people because I don't mean normal people, but the average citizen, let's say that, is off work at 5, 6 o'clock. So by the time they go home, maybe have some dinner, want to come, you know, take a quick nap because we all know you guys are going to have a couple of drinks to stay out late. You want to listen a little bit longer. That, and in North Carolina, the weather over the summer is, I mean, we've all experienced it. It's horrific when the sun's up. So by staying open until 11, and it's only Friday and Saturday, I think that we, we generate a lot of business that hour. I mean, a lot in sales. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't consider, but, you know, I mean, we would love to stay with music outside till midnight, 1:00. I mean, like, you know, like they do in Wilmington, or, you know, they're a mixed-use city. Or, you know, some other areas like downtown Raleigh. God knows downtown Raleigh's open all night, and there are definitely, you know, mixed use. It's apartments, it's condos, it's business.
But you have two bands, right?
One on Friday and one on Saturday.
Okay, because I've been there where there's two at the same night. One goes off at the time, and then there's one inside, and the windows are shut, and you really can't hear it. So what I'm saying is, if we made, if we agreed, or you guys were able to agree to the 10 o'clock for, to try out for six months, with, I'm not trying to say that you're not losing money, but how can you say you are losing money if, without trying, for the simple fact that that's a happy medium between the two, I would say? Because personally, if the music stops at 10 o'clock, I'm still going to be there and have a drink and enjoy my friends because I know there's music inside and it's cooler. But that's me personally. And I don't have anything against the downtown businesses, and I don't have anything against the residents. I'm just saying, they're either going to have to do it for six months to see how it's going to work if we vote to do this ordinance, or you guys, the businesses, are going to have to try and do the 10 o'clock to see if that works. I'm just saying either or, someone's suffering, you understand?
Some way or another.
And for me, I would love to see the documentation or that, the data to say that you are actually losing money from having the time from 10 to 11, from going to 10 o'clock. I would, I mean, personally, that's me. I would just, I would like to know. I mean, because then obviously, that's, that's some backing to say, okay, we need it to be 11 o'clock because this is our bread and butter. You know, we, we're losing business because of that, and we don't want to see any of our businesses downtown lose income. But I'm just, I'm just trying to think, you know, I wasn't going to the meetings, but I understand, you know, and I also, playing devil's advocate, you know, I'm not from here. I know about downtown and stuff, moving into these locations that's vibrant, even in Greenville and stuff like. So I totally get it, I understand, but I just, I just wanted to throw that out there just to see what you, you know, what you thought or, you know, if it was possible.
I would say honestly, I mean, I understand, I understand where you're coming from completely. But from the beginning, we have made concession after concession, like with decibels, with the, with the time. With, I mean, we tried the tent, now we're, now we're adding, building structures, we're bringing another down, another business downtown and to just, I guess I'm just saying, like, we're following the rules. For example, the band this weekend, both bands hit the same decibel reading all weekend. We took logs from the time they started to the time they finished and after. And I, the decibel. Can I share? I can, yes.
That's the only question I have. What decibel levels?
The decibel reading, we set the band on the deck to 70 decibels so that anywhere around our property line, which is current, is in the draft, is property line, that it will measure below that considerably. We walk around, and our readings are from in front of the building to the Wells Fargo driveway that's to the right in front of our building, to the Middle Street in Wells Fargo, to the back of the farmer's market parking lot by the factory, to, like, the farmer's market itself, the third door on the door, which is straight across from our deck, to the railroad tracks. And we take all these measurements to make sure that we're below that 70 that was, you know, that we agreed upon in that meeting. And not only are we doing that now, but we've, we've been doing this. And looking at the data presented from other cities and counties and whatnot. We're right in line with that, every single person. You asked about data from other counties and cities. Well, I printed that and have all of that here. And weekdays for, I would say, 80, 85 to 90% of these, it's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Friday and Saturday. And I'm not saying that we have to do it like everybody else does, but why reinvent the wheel if it's already working for these different areas? And that, I guess that's.
One last thing. When you were measuring, did you measure when you opened the door? Because I know when you opened the door down there, that music is.
It's loud when you open. We stand, we, we stand there for a good period of time and look at an average, obviously. And that's what concerns me about that peak reading, is because that spike, when you open the door, it's open for, you know, five seconds. We have security inside and outside that control that so that it's, shut the door, shut the door. You know what I mean? We're making sure that that's a short period, so that we're getting legitimate readings and not just, like I said, that spike reading.
Well, I just want to commend you for taking the necessary steps to try and rectify the situation. Because like I said, I go down there, I enjoy the music, so I understand the frustration and the concern to want to be able to have a happy medium. And I understand Dr. Adolf and her concerns. And I'm glad Sabrina was able to be at these meetings and have these discuss, these discussions. Because I mean, I know it's a tricky situation to, to deal with, so.
It really isn't. I mean, this was, this binder has been the bane of my existence for the last year, putting it together and trying to, you know, field different ways to make it right and, you know, provide entertainment and, like, food, beverage, and entertainment for the people that are now coming to our town instead of going elsewhere. But also making it livable for the people that live downtown. I know currently, my husband and I are looking at an apartment that's just opened up that's down there. I mean, we're kind of excited to be able to walk back and forth to work. So that being said, I know that, I know that this is a very heated subject and ordinance for you to work together and put something in. So I really do commend you on the, on the job. I just also want to remind everybody that this is citywide. This isn't just for downtown, and that's exactly what this ordinance states. So across the board, I mean, you know, this is for businesses on Glen Burnie and Highway 17. God knows that that's growing quickly. I mean, who knows what's going to come up next? I know that we looked at a location over there, just putting that out there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Woods?
That's the problem I have, because all I've heard is downtown, downtown, downtown. I have a business on Queen Street that is a rental property that we rent to people that have parties. You're going to pass a city ordinance that half of the people in the city didn't know about. Who was on this board? Were there members of the community on this board? Or were they all businesses and residents downtown?
The complaint, the complaint or the complaining?
I asked the question, not where the complaint was. Were there other people on this board other than people downtown?
It wasn't a board, it was a committee of citizens.
Were there citizens from other places other than downtown?
No, sir.
Okay, so now you have people who live downtown who has made a noise ordinance for the entire city of New Bern, and people like myself, people on Glen Burnie, people on 17, and the mall has no idea that this is about to be law. And it's going to affect all of us. But you're only concerned about downtown. Because the whole time I've been sitting here, that's all I heard, was downtown, downtown, downtown. I, I do, I feel for the people who stay downtown. I understand about the clubs. But the businesses that support this city are not all downtown. Everybody should have been brought to that table to make this decision that you're about to vote on that's going to affect our livelihood. I don't live downtown, and I don't have a business downtown, but I have a business in the city of New Bern. You're making an ordinance that's going to affect my business, and I don't have any clue about it. And I guarantee you, I'm not the only one.
Mr. City Attorney, what was the reason? Originally, the ordinance we made was for just downtown, correct? The one we made last year was just impacted downtown.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it was just for downtown?
That's right.
And so what was, why was the decision to make this citywide? I did not request that, by the way.
Yes, ma'am. I've dealt with problems like this beyond the downtown ward. And my recommendation to you is if we're going to go to a modern ordinance, my recommendation to you is that we do it citywide. One rule, good for one, good for all.
And I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I really do agree with Mr. Woods in regards to the fact that if it's going to be citywide, you know.
Do we have complaints?
Well, probably after this meeting.
How many public hearings have we had about this?
This is the first one, and we're not.
How many times have we discussed it?
But it's always been based on downtown.
Downtown, the last one was strictly for downtown.
And like she said, she did, Ms. Bingle did not request it, but I feel like we need to do our due diligence to kind of get more information out there to the citizens so they at least have the right to come here and have another public hearing and speak because that's what we represent. We need to make sure we represent all the voices for the simple fact that it's not just downtown, that it is citywide. I mean, that's, that's how I feel. I agree with what he's saying. I mean, everyone's impacted by this and not just downtown. And if we're all doing our proper due diligence, we would allow the public at another meeting, once we put on social media, however we get out there, talk to our constituents, that this ordinance may or may not. that this ordinance may or may not be passed based on what's already written.
Mr. City Attorney, so this was not advertised, um, in the newspaper or website or indeed about the meetings that, to form for this noise ordinance?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, no. I'll, I'll-
It was not-
I'll do that, right. It's not a legal requirement, this is a political process.
So it's not a legal requirement?
No ma'am, no ma'am.
But, um- The complaint, Alderman, that's just, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page on this. Um, the original noise ordinance we passed a year ago in May was an ordinance, wa- it was specifically for downtown.
Right.
So when it was not working, the downtown residents came to me and the businesses saying, it's not working, we want changes. So we had meetings with just the residents of downtown and the businesses of downtown to try to affect change, change up the ordinance. At the suggestion of the city manager, excuse me, of the city attorney, he was writing this ordinance to work for all. It was not requested for it to be all of debt, all of New Bern, but that's how it was written. So at the time we were meeting, we were meeting to change an ordinance that was already in place for downtown only. And that's why no one from the outside was involved in the meetings, other than downtown.
I, I, I benchmark cities where the ordinances that we looked at, were they, were just a certain district or did they?
They're citywide. And, and the, and the logic is it, it, it takes a lot of time and money to train enforcement. And if you're gonna go to that expense and draft a technical ordinance to apply in a very small area, you're devoting a lot of resources where you have a different rule, um, than you have with the broader part of your city. It's so much easier to have one rule. Um, and, and let me remind you again, when we first discussed this, and I know it's been a lot of months, but my recommendation to you was, was not so much in reviewing what the words say and what the magic numbers are. Seventy decimals doesn't mean anything on paper. Sixty means nothing to you. You need to go out with a meter and listen to noise and go, oh, that's fifty, that's seventy. PD has months of data, um, from the July date through August, they have four weeks. I don't know how many samples they did, but they've got a giant log of data. My recollection is the highest peak they recorded during that test period was sixty-eight decimals, one peak of sixty-eight decimals. I think after that, the vast majority, ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the readings were below sixty-five. But that means nothing to you until you stand there at the door and you look at the decimal reading and go, oh, that's, that's what sixty-five sounds like. I think that is too low. I think that's too high. But that's what needs to happen. Otherwise, we can meet forever, talk about numbers that have no meaning.
Right, I understand.
Swanson.
To follow up on Jennifer's comments, uh, in lieu of shutting on, shutting down at ten o'clock, if they would just try to run the, run the meters at sixty dB, try it at sixty dB. I mean, it's, I probably won't hear it at that. It's just pushing that limit that's been arbitrarily pulled out of the air. It, it's still too loud. I hear it in my bedroom and several of us here in our bedrooms, it's just not that many people wanna come forward about it. So like, like the attorney said, there's, it's, it's an arbitrary number. The problem is if I can hear it in my bedroom, the number's not right. Uh, and I think that she wouldn't lose any revenue because it, when they, when they're playing or I can't hear it in my bedroom, it's really pleasant on my deck. I go up on the roof deck and I can hear it and I can hear the people enjoying the music. I can hear them whooping and hollering quietly and it's no problem. But I, I think this arbitrary number's gonna be too high. And if she's willing to play it at sixty dB for a while. And every band sounds different and this come up, this came up with, at the meeting, the first meeting, every band brings their own equipment. Some speakers have a different quality of sound than others. And I think that's what's happening Friday night versus Saturday night. Like I said, Friday night might have been seventy dB, but it was cranking in my bedroom. I had to change bedrooms Friday night. Saturday night was, if it was seventy dB, I didn't hear it. It was pleasant. So it's just a, a matter of working with us and, and she's willing to do, to do so. She's proven it and working hard to do that. So again, to their benefit, uh, I think we can work something out. Thanks.
Uh, yes, please come forward.
Hi, not directly concerned. I live in a very quiet neighborhood, so, but, um, I think the tradition has been, you know, when police used to come around the neighborhood parties back in the days when I was drinking, um, was that, that the level came down as the night went on. You know, that the noise level should be lower as the evening goes on. And so I don't, that might be a solution is to, um, have it staggered. Have it, you know, uh, seventy up until a certain time and then, and then sixty or sixty-five after that time. Because in, in fairness, um, again, I, I live on a, a dead end street, so there's no, no traffic at all up there after seven PM. Um, people moving downtown would not, moving into an area that was mixed residential, retail and restaurants. And that's the way they would portray it. They wouldn't have imagined that there would be outdoor music playing late into the night when they made purchases, you know, fairness. So as to whether to extend it to the rest of the city, I have no idea. I've never heard loud music outside downtown. But if the police department is getting complaints, maybe you shouldn't make, and if they're not, maybe you should just ignore it. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I think that's a, a great point there that he said, um, maybe it's possible to think about be, between, staggering between ten and eleven, that time Friday and Saturday to bring it down maybe ten decimals. So it'd be sixty or sixty-five if it, if they did their readings and it never really went above sixty-five. Maybe that's a possibility, just throwing that out there.
I went through a couple of meetings about the noise ordinance, uh, and what I have to do is I have to start to look at James and say, you know, I really like what the man said because there's not one person in this room who's an expert about noise. And I made a recommendation at one of the meetings that we hire someone. And that we bring that person in not only because of their expertise with noise, but also because they should run the meeting where all interested parties attend so that we can work out a solution. And that was completely ignored. So what we have now is a mess. Now I've been living in this town for twenty-one years. And I've never had a problem with noise until this past year. Isn't that amazing? The restaurants close at ten or eleven. Their patrons go home quietly. But now we have a different type of venue and they don't go home quietly. And that's not being taken into consideration. In other words, it's a lack of planning. It's just, eh, do what you do and then we'll react to it. Well, now we're trying to react. I don't know what the decimal reading should be. I don't really care. I'm not an expert. But I agree with James. We need to take a look at this from the citywide perspective. What's best for everybody and we may never come up with an ordinance that works. That's true. But we need to go there first. And I think we need to bring in the experts who know how to figure these things out. We're not the experts, we're concerned people, that's all. And no one questions the concern. It's there. The knowledge isn't. Thank you.
Who is the noise person you had?
Um, I, you'll have to forgive me for the name, um, but at the request of Kathy Adolf, um, who spoke earlier, she requested that, uh, someone that she knows who has spent their entire lifetime in sound. And it is probably about as close to a sound expert as we probably could have gotten without having to pay one, cause he volunteered his time to show up. Actually came to those meetings. And as Kathy also mentioned, that professional, the, the guy that was volunteering his time, said that seventy was not an unreasonable number. And I think that's the reason why you see a lot of municipalities across the state adopt seventy or sometimes even higher. I mean, some places, we, we, we saw whenever we looked at all the different spectrum of, of cities, they were higher. So, uh, but he wasn't, he wasn't employed, he didn't, he didn't get paid, but he did show up and he did provide valuable input. He was the one that actually made the comments about the pascals, um, about the, the pressure that Kathy mentioned. So, uh, um, uh, that, that is the, uh, the portion of the meeting where I was unable to answer that question uh, with regards to, uh, whether our machine measured pascals. I did follow up it, we, we do not have the machine that measures pascals because that's more of the, the oomph, uh, as she was mentioning, but, uh, it does measure the decimals. Um, and, um, the recommendations that came out of that meeting, um, I, I felt were, were definitely a consensus. Um, I know Ms. Adolf did mention that she would prefer sixty-five, if I'm not mistaken on that, I think was the comment that was made. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Mealy, uh, made kind of a, say, let's move forward with seventy and we can try it for a year. Um, and, um, we'll, we can go from there.
Is Ms. Mealy a, a downtown resident?
She owns the, uh, uh, one of the, uh, units right there at Bear, uh, Bear Plaza. And is a former, um, county commissioner from Hammock County.
Oh, okay. Come forward.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Mountney and I live at one nineteen Middle Street. Um, had not planned on coming up and speaking this evening, but there's so many different things going on, I feel, I felt compelled to. Um, first of all, Jennifer and Dale are, I consider them friends. I go to their establishment a lot. Uh, it's very convenient. It's in my backyard. And, uh, and they do a fantastic job. And Alderman Harris, if I can answer your question, I guarantee you between ten and eleven, there's a lot of money rolling through that business. I certainly don't wanna do anything to affect anybody's business in this town. Also, this gentleman spoke about the city of New Bern. I agree completely. I mean, if we're gonna adopt an, an ordinance for the city and it's geared towards the downtown district, that doesn't seem fair and equitable to, to all the city, you know, citizens. Um, and I know it's kind of, it sounds like it's evolved into something more than what you guys started talking about in the, in the beginning. Um, I can say I'm no noise expert. I have a noise meter. I stand in my living room and it's almost seventy decimals from next door on Friday and Saturday night. So in order for Kathy to talk about, there was a, an, an, a notice or a request for some of you guys or someone from the city or, or any committee member to come out and observe, please. My door is always open at one nineteen Middle Street. Come and sit and have a glass of wine in my living room and you can enjoy the music from Blackgate. And again, I don't wanna, I'm, am not here to affect their business. I think Dale does a fantastic job with both of his establishments. Um, and again, I, I go there frequently. Uh, I don't go on Friday and Saturday night because honestly, it's just way too loud. Um, I think that we can come to a happy medium to where there can be outdoor music for the citizens of this community. I think it's needed and, and I applaud them for bringing it to, especially to downtown. Kinda wish it wasn't in my backyard, but it is and that's the way it is. But, um, again, I welcome you guys to come and hang out at my house. And I guarantee you regardless of whether it's seventy decimals, sixty decimals, ninety decimals, it's way too loud on Friday and Saturday night when I can't sit and watch TV in my living room without hearing the noise from next door. Much less go to sleep. My children can't sleep, I can't sleep. Um, I wait, I watch the clock until about eleven thirty and then we can finally go to bed.
Aaron, do you have a, a solution? I was curious. I mean, what would your resolution be?
I love the idea of, you know, to ten o'clock, I'm totally fine with that. I think, again, I don't wanna impact their business and that's why I said I'm, I'm a business owner in this town. And, and I know from ten to eleven o'clock, they've got to, that's a substantial amount of revenue for their business. I don't wanna impact that. I think by the time ten o'clock rolls around and the, the folks that are, that are there, uh, have had enough to eat and, and a cocktail or two, bringing the noise level down to a reasonable level for the last hour, I think is a good fit for everybody.
I agree.
Um, it allows their establishment to stay open till eleven o'clock. Um, you know, the, the citizens to, to have a good time until eleven o'clock at a reasonable level. And again, walk down the street and stand there. I guarantee it is loud. And I don't know this gentleman, I'm not sure where, where you live, but, um, I've got a lot of friends that live downtown, especially at Sky Salem. Um, and they all share the same, you know, conversation. Um-
It sounds like the, the, it needs, the sound just needs to be mitigated in some way.
Yeah, if there was a way, um, to, I love the idea of a wall, I don't wanna build a wall. That's a terrible thing to say these days, but if there was some type of abatement that could happen around the, the, uh, the back patio. Um, I mean, I've been a patron of their business ever since they opened. Um, and, uh, and it's a great place. I don't want anything to affect their business. I think we can all collectively come to a, an agreement that, that, and again, whether it's sixty decimals, forty decimals, ninety, who knows? I certainly don't know. Um, but, uh, I think that there's something that we can do to, for, for their business. And I don't wanna just focus on their business. If this is gonna be citywide, it needs to take into consideration everybody's business. Um, but, uh, since I live right there, that's, that's what, what I wanted to discuss tonight, so.
Well, my, my concern here is I know this noise, um, is a nuisance for the residents, you know. But is this, uh, I guess Mister, um, City Attorney, City Manager, are we talking about basically the noise coming from one or two businesses downtown or is this numerous businesses downtown?
Yes.
I'm gonna say num- I'm gonna say numerous, cause everybody's popping up with the loud music.
There's been, there's been several in downtown, um, um, we've had some complaints on Pollock Street. We've had some complaints on South Front Street. We've had some complaints, uh, on, um, um, over, uh, in the, the Gimp community with regards to, um, um, a religious organization that's out there. We've had complaints that's, uh, um, uh, was generated back whenever, what was it? Yeah, the, um, over close to the towers, there used to be a nightclub there that, uh, that caused a lot of noise-generated complaints at the time. Um, those were old ordinance. Um, and then obviously, but as, as, uh, Alderman, Alderman Bagel pointed out, uh, there was some, um, um, new ordinance amendments that were made just specifically for the downtown, uh, commercial core area. But, uh, I mean, there's been, there's been noise complaining. There's noise complaints over, uh, close to Tryon Palace. There were noise complaints over near the Riverside area many years ago. There's, so we get noise complaints, they're, they're not quite as much as they used to be, but we do service them.
Well, I, me personally, I, I feel that, and this is me personally, that if you're gonna have a business downtown and you know it's a mixed commercial and residential, and you have a business, then you should take into consideration that you have residents that try to get to bed at a certain time because they have a business to run or a job to go to. So if you don't have a business downtown and after a certain, I'll just say eleven o'clock on weekends, if you have an outside vineyard where your music is outside, then as Alderman Harris said, take it inside. If you, if you don't wanna take it inside, then you need to put up, I'm gonna say it, a wall to buff it out so that you can be consideration for other residents and other people, other businesses as well. So I, I don't see, why, why are we going back and forth, back and forth with this? When if you have a business downtown and you're outside of the noise zone, your decimals is too loud. If you don't comply with it, then I think that's another step that we gotta look into. I, I just think that something should be done about that business or those businesses that don't comply. Whether we have the previous ordinance in place or come up with this new ordinance. So, any comment?
Alderman, uh, Shimon, is it, the issue that you're having, is it consistent or is it sporadic?
It's consistent on Friday and Saturday nights.
Friday and Saturday nights, every Friday, Saturday night.
I'd just like to-
Yeah, my kids kinda sometimes pray for rain on Fridays and Saturdays.
How far away do you live?
No, cause they have the thing out there when it's raining.
How, how many feet, about how many feet do you live from that particular?
My back door, I would guess is about two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet from the back corner of their deck. And that was the other thing I was asking about the, the readings. Um, if, if they've done their readings according to these, uh, regulations and it's below seventy, then if you guys adopt this ordinance and we try it out for six or twelve months, um, I guarantee you, because I'm not wanting to come before and speak, this is the first time I've addressed you guys, um, I'll be here all the time because it's just too, too loud. Uh, that's my concern. If I stand to the outside of their establishment with a, a sound meter and, uh, and it's at seventy and I go into my home and I can't enjoy watching TV because I hear that music over my television set, uh, that's a, there's a problem there. Um, I think we can come to a solution. I wanna come to a solution. I want these guys to have great business downtown. I want the community to flourish down there. Um, we just gotta do something about the noise on Friday and Saturday nights.
My, my concern as a, as someone that sits up here and has to deal with, you know, discuss this is I don't want anyone, whether business or residents, to feel that their tax dollars don't matter. Um, this is definitely a, a very hard situation. Um, it would've been wonderful if there, you know, you guys were able to come together. Obviously, um, based on the comments, we, we were not able to do that. But some of the suggestions that I thought tonight were amazing, especially from Mister Duffy in regards to in between that ten and eleven, you know, dropping down the decibel level, um, I don't know- I don't know if the committee could come back together and have a conversation. I'm not, obviously, trying to drag this along, but, you know, due to the fact that this will be citywide, I feel like we need to have a little bit more discussion based on.
Having the discussion tonight, not to just vote on it.
Yeah, there's a lot of folks in this town that, that think the city moves so slowly when it comes to certain issues. It's good to move slow sometimes, because it, otherwise you roll something out. Why do we wanna roll something out when we're gonna revisit in six months, that doesn't make any sense?
Right.
So let's get the committee back together, and Kathy, when she mentioned that it was open for someone to come and, and observe, and nobody did, that's, you know, disheartening for me as a citizen, especially of downtown, when, uh, when this is such an important issue, that it obviously, it's had meeting after meeting after meeting. I haven't attended any of those meetings, 'cause I didn't know about them, I didn't know where they were.
Kathy, was it sent out through Hydra? I believe the notice is where.
Yeah, come on up to the panel.
I guess I had not made my point clear earlier. None of this was a Hydra event, it's not my, um, job. I have taken the lead, have been asked by folks to set up some meetings. But to my point that I tried to make earlier, it is not, this is not a swell from the ground up. This is a city ordinance, there was a citywide ordinance, and a year and a half ago, the, the board changed that ordinance, which created clearly a citizen reaction. But the process and setting up the meetings, in my view, and the view of, I think, everybody that I know downtown, has to come from the city. It is the city's job to put forward a process, to gather community, to put together the data, to invite whomever in all of the wards, and I appreciate, um, um, Mr. Woods' comments on this, because it's a citywide law. So, it is not Kathy's to do, it is not the citizens to do, we are participants with government. And, so to me, it's upside down, it's just odd, um, to watch this play out. So, I, I don't know how to say it anymore clearly. There are so, so many, and this is not gonna be perfect, no law is. But have there been, I mean, there are members of this board who have not been at any meeting. And it sounds like kind of a big deal, as the city grows, and in its renaissance becomes a changed city. I don't know what to say. And I'll just point out a couple things, just, um, you know, if you, if you're at the Pelican, we've, we've been talking about, and I don't want Blackbeard to be a target of anything, 'cause she's done so much. But if you're standing at the street in front of the Pelican, you are right in front of that band. If you are standing at, and, and this was a legal issue that the city attorney had pointed out to us, when we said, we didn't talk, we talked about measuring sound from the source of the sound, and the city attorney said, probably not a good idea, because to enforce this decibel level, as it is enforced in other municipalities, it has to be from the property line. Well, I gotta tell you, from the property line at Pelican, the property line at Prohibition, the property line when BTM opens up its outdoor venue, i- is gonna be complicated, because that sound is, um, not like Blackbeard's, where it goes through the front door, through the entire establishment, through the back wall, to the back patio, to get that decibel level at, at the property line. So, you know, it's complicated, I know that the city attorney and others here have looked into this issue. I certainly don't have the answers, but I, I don't have the answers.
Ms. Kathy, to be fair, you know, the ordinance was changed, and, you know, complaints were made, and I feel like, you know, most of the complaints were dealt with downtown. So, when, when it was first discussed, it was downtown, and out of respect.
That's because the change in the ordinance that was made by this board only, only affected downtown residents.
Right, so in the beginning, the complaints had to do with downtown. So therefore, Ms. Bingo represents downtown, so we allow her to do her due diligence to go to these meetings, and I know her and the mayor went and stood there with the police, and, and, and listened to them, and I can't speak for the rest of, rest of the board, but I know I was supposed to go to one, and I wasn't able to make it. But I trust in her that she's able to do her job, 'cause she does it really good. But in the beginning, it was specifically for downtown. So, us asking, you know, suggestions, we're trying to help you guys help each other, because the issue is between the business owners and the residents. And we, they went, and, and the sounds were done, and now we're at the point of trying to put into policy something that's gonna work for both of you guys. So, I just, I, you know I love you, I just, I just don't want you to, the way that you're coming off is like, we're not trying to, to help the citizens, or that she didn't spend over a year dealing with this situation, because she has, and I know the, the city attorney and the city manager, whether it was agreeable on what happened in these meetings, the meetings were held, so I, I don't want it to sound like the city has not done anything to.
Oh, I, I've been at probably all of those meetings, both the ones by Hydra, both the ones that were set up, petitioning, trust me, I, I, I hear the work that was involved over the last year and a half. But to your point, it is not a downtown issue, this is a citywide ordinance. And the change that was made a year ago is being looked at as another change, so it, it's, I guess, complicated.
Very much so. Well, that was the idea that we had this, what we had this tonight, was so that we could get input before we passed it. And there's nothing to say that we have to pass it at the next meeting, nothing is forcing us to do that. It's why we had an open public session, people are watching it on Facebook, they're on the TV, we're hearing the concerns, and then this board will make the decision, I'm but one vote.
Did, can I ask a question for, for the residents? Did it get worse with the change in the ordinance? Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking that, I'm asking, did the sound level get worse when the ordinance changed?
No, 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 when we, we changed the one a year ago in May, is the sound any louder than it was originally?
So, what I hope is my last and final question. What, from an expert standpoint, my, my concern with that is, is you're taking out the local aspect of us being your voice and your elected official. If an expert comes in, and we pay him twenty-five thousand dollars, and say, they say the decibel level's gonna be seventy-five, y'all aren't gonna be happy. And if they come in and they say it's supposed to be sixty-five, I'm afraid you're not gonna be happy, 'cause you're gonna want it sixty. My concern is, as famous words of our attorney, I hate this, but finding something that everybody can stomach and equally unhappy. I don't know what that level is, I don't think an expert's gonna be able to tell us what that level is. But it sounds like to me, it's ten o'clock.
They had to just turn the volume down.
But they also lost their right to be able to make a complaint, and I think that's a big problem, too. So, if the, if the decibel was set at a certain level, at a certain time, if Mr. Aaron wants to make a complaint at eleven o'clock, because he's saying around eleven-thirty the noise is done, does he have a right to do that? If, you know what I'm saying?
I, I hate, like, anybody to put more work on our plate and have more meetings, but this needs a work session, it needs to have time dedicated to this discussion, this topic, not in the middle of a board session, for us to look at a draft ordinance that's been put together, for us to potentially vote on it next meeting. That would be my suggestion, because I don't think the folks here in the audience are happy with this ordinance. And we passed an ordinance a year ago that obviously they're not happy with, and I don't want to do the same thing again.
Can, but, but, one last thing before you, is there a way that if we, if we do have a work session, that it's mandatory for us to go to the locations and hear the sounds ourselves? You know what I'm saying? I mean, can, can we, at a, I mean, can we, you know, guarantee that the board is gonna actually, on a Friday or Saturday, link up with one of the police officers to go listen to it?
We can have a work session at nine o'clock on Friday night.
Sounds good to me.
I just wanna make an observation, and that is that when the, the new ordinance from May of last year was put in place, it said that if you live in C one or C two, the only thing you can complain about is amplified music. Well, I have something that's happening next door to me, and they're partying in the driveway, which is three feet from my bedroom window. That's a lot of noise, and it has nothing to do with music, but I can't make a complaint. Now, I did, the police came out, and they said, "Well, you're not allowed to make a complaint." And then I called them another time, 'cause it was one-thirty in the morning, and they said, "Well, we'll talk to them about doing it inside, but you're not allowed to make a complaint, because you're in C two." Well, that's crap. That wasn't considered, we've been talking about the business, it's been very successful, and I'm glad, but we're not just talking about outdoor music, we're talking about the noise that people make, noise. And thank God, Scott, he put that in the new ordinance, there's a whole section about the sources of noise. I mean, that, the ordinance that he drafted by and large is a pretty damn good ordinance. The problem with it is that maybe it doesn't address citywide issues. It just focuses on the downtown.
Can, can, Mr. Attorney, can this draft ordinance, whatever the form or fashion it ends up being, can that be for the downtown district?
Sure.
Okay.
But, but let me just tell you, though, that what you're gonna be left with, if you are outside of downtown, is you're gonna be dealing with the reasonable too-loud standard that I would not want to try to enforce in front of a judge. It just goes nowhere, a judge doesn't want to hear about all of this, like this meeting, some think it's too loud, some think it's not allowed, and it's gonna get dismissed. So, so our objective with this ordinance was to make it understandable for all citizens, make it easy to administer by PD, and if we do those two things, and I do my job, it will be legally enforceable. That's the magic of a good noise ordinance. And if we carve out the rest of the city and say, "You can't have noise that extends more than a hundred feet," now, we have commercial districts all over the city. Those folks, I don't know why they wouldn't want the same sound levels as downtown. Every other city does a citywide decibel level, by zone. The more dense the zone, the louder the noise, residential has quiet, industrial has the loudest. That's a common, I'm, I'm not sure I've seen another, I've never seen one that was split out, where you had a different noise standard in different parts of town. Very hard for PD to deal with, I, I think you're gonna run into a lot of problems trying to do this. I can't think of a reason why this, this model shouldn't be citywide.
I don't have a problem with it being citywide, I think we need to go with what Mr. Odom said, and set up a work session as soon as possible, preferably if, if no one is against it, to do it around the time when we can hear the noise, or, you know, duplicate the noise, so that we all have an understanding, because at the end of the day, we all have to vote on this. You know, we hear everybody's concerns, but I feel it's important that if we actually hear, whether we go visit Mr. Aaron at his place, or stop by Mr. Watson, Watson, to, to listen, and then go down to, you know, go on a field trip, I think it's very important, because obviously, this is very important, for the fact that it's not just gonna be downtown, it's citywide. We need to go ahead and just get our schedules together and work it out.
One more comment, that during my research over the last year, I've, I've researched dozens and dozens of municipalities in eastern Carolina and western Carolina, and some of those municipalities had zones, other than just commercial, residential, mixed use. The main complaint here is downtown, make that a zone. Make the areas where the, the other citizen was complaining about a different level, because there's not, it depends on the density of residential, uh, development, depending on what the noise level might be, so that's something to consider as well.
We need to call for a, a, a workshop or whatever?
I was just, I was sitting down letting everybody else talk, just in closing, um, again, what Kathy just brought up is a huge point. The, the folks that live in, uh, two hundred block of Middle Street, above Snapdragon and MJ's and that area, those condos that are there are gonna be affected more than I am, and this gentleman is, wants BTM's little venue, whatever they're doing there, if they have live fans, 'cause it's gonna just project right across. So, there's a lot more, I don't want to single out Blackbeards, that's not what I'm here to do, especially if it's a citywide ordinance. There's a lot of businesses in the city that make a lot of noise. So I certainly don't want to single them out. I agree with the Pelican, and certainly if that venue at, at BTM's opens with live music, there's gonna be a whole lot more complaints coming to you, just from those residents right across the street. So, thank you guys for, for hearing everybody this evening. I would, again, welcome anybody to come and, and hang out and, and see, I think it's a great idea to have a work session, and really dig into this a lot more, because it needs to be fair for businesses and residents alike, so.
Do you wanna try to work on a date for that now?
Y'all, y'all decide, 'cause I'm gonna be on the next two weeks.
August thirtieth.
You said, oh, she, okay, I'm gonna think, someone said August thirty-first, 'cause Blackbeard's having bipolar express.
Labor Day weekend.
Wig, wig line.
Yes, he is off the chain on his Facebook, yeah. Oh, you get back on the thirtieth?
I, I mean, we just need to contact the police department, schedule some times that we can all kinda get down there, not necessarily as a group. I mean, I might want to go Friday night, you could go Saturday night, just listen to it for ourselves. I mean, it's kinda, kinda hard to do a work session while you're listening to music at a bar.
We're not going into the bar, we're gonna stand a hundred.
Well, I'm not sure about all that, but, still, I mean, I would like to personally go out and, and listen to it.
But how much are we putting on the staff if they have to go out so many times?
Well, they're gonna do it anyway, so, I mean, they can, they can handle, they can accommodate a couple of us at a time, can't you?
So, do we need to do that before we actually have our work session?
That would be great.
Are they the ones that had the meter?
Yes.
Okay.
PD.
So I thought we, who should we contact to schedule a time, maybe to go down there?
Cap, Cap, uh, May Jones, I think, Stephen Williams, is that correct?
Stephen Williams, I'll get y'all the phone number.
Yeah, just, and I would mean, maybe two of us can go at a time or something, meet down there and just listen.
And Aaron, I've done my thing, but then we need to arrange, I think, you can go, that's exactly what we did. We went, we stood in front of the bar, the side, we walked around the corner, you know, we went to several different places. But I think they make a good point, we're going inside to Aaron's house, and maybe hearing how it sounds upstairs. Like, you know, I could tell I was standing below Mr. Watson's bedroom and listening to that, but I didn't know what it sounded, sounded like up in his bedroom, so that sound could, you know, be traveling in a different, different way. And it's interesting, 'cause it is a tunnel, I have to say, that, that sound is different in the parking lot there of the Crestcom Bank, the way it comes across the street, and it kinda like goes like that. And it did have a different sound level there than it did standing on the street across the street.
The season and the time of year is gonna change that, too.
It does, the wintertime, when there's no leaves on the tree, the air's colder, it, it is more intense, I, I.
With sound barriers, would sound barriers help, I mean, and can they, are they even allowed, if they were to build something like that down there, to kinda help?
Depends, yeah, depends. Um, I know you wanna move on, ju- just let me beat the dead horse. And, I'm not sure we're all clear, when we're talking about a citywide ordinance, what I was hearing, the confusion, was that should we have a decibel system for downtown, and a non-decibel system outside of it?
No, I think they were saying make a separate zone.
Yes, that's what you've got in front of you, that's just so, I, that's why I was confused. The current draft is a citywide ordinance, but it breaks the decibel levels down by zoning districts. Every district can have a different decibel level, okay? We, we, we can, we could break out C one, two, three, four, five, six, if you like, or we could break out all the residential zones. I've broken this into three zones, which is the most common methodology, residential, commercial, industrial. But you can, you can keep slicing that pie as much as you want, by zone, and that would be citywide. So, that's why I'm saying, it's easy to have this ordinance citywide, because you have a decibel objective system that applies everywhere. The actual readings will vary, depending on what location you're measuring from. That's not to be confused with a decibel system that. That's not to be confused with a decibel system downtown and a non-decibel system elsewhere.
I, I want to also, I, I, I kinda hesitated about even bringing this up, and I want to remind, because I received a phone call today. If you remember, several meetings ago, the young lady, this is a schoolteacher, spoke and said, "Please, don't interfere with the activities of the young people." Well, she called me, I'm not sure she called anyone else, she called me today, and she, again, said, you know, New Bern is finally getting young people. They enjoy going out and listening to music. I reme- I remember growing up around here, you know, we always complained that there was nothing for young people to do.
Instead of being-
I, yeah. Now, I feel for the residents out there, I really do, but I have to say that I did receive a phone call today from this young lady, and she said, "Please, don't cut our music off at ten o'clock." It's not like it used to be. When I was dating Jean, we would leave the house at five o'clock and be hung by eleven or five. My son doesn't even leave the house now until ten o'clock.
That's because you had dirt floors back then.
That's right.
And you had to walk both ways.
And my son is downtown just about every Friday and Saturday night.
Wow.
And, and he, he says, "Please," you know? So, not, just, just, you know, they called me, so I have to state, you know, their concerns as well. They were here and stated the same thing to this board. We just need to, I personally, I mean, all of our benchmark cities are at seventy. Our expert says seventy. I, I personally think we ought to try the seventy, and, and give it a, give it a try and see, and if it doesn't work out, then we can always change it. But if, you know, that's just where I'm at. I mean, that's what your expert said.
Very sure.
And that's DB's, not years of age. I saw that snicker on your face there, Jeff. I'm sorry, gentlemen.
You're fine. I guess all I, I just wanted to finish out with, I know that we keep focusing on Blackbeards, but I know that one of the studies that I had done was Saturday and Sunday all day. Started at eleven AM and did through midnight, and I think I gave that reading to you. Is that all around town, regardless of whether there's live entertainment, or there's acoustics, or there's just people talking, the levels of sound downtown are pretty loud on a Sunday afternoon, like after church. I know that we had readings that ranged from seventy to eighty, depending on where we were standing and how many people were around. And I'm, I'm, and I'm not saying that because I think we should go louder, because I don't, I think we should stick at seventy. I just think that, I mean, you guys need to go out, check it out, get some readings on your own, and make a decision, but make a decision, so that there's that line in the sand, because unfortunately, there's, there's a lot of new officers with the police department, and, and I would rather know that they have those guidelines to go by that is not based on just their discretion, even though I do trust them with discretion, otherwise, they wouldn't be in that position. But that they can look at and say, "Okay, this is what it's supposed to be, this is what it is, it's a violation, it's not a violation." And I think that, that with those young, those younger people that are coming in the newer, the less than five years, they, they need that, they need those guidelines, and that's all that I ask, is that, you know, all, all efforts are exhausted, so to speak, and that we, we try to do everything that we can and get something in the sand, but get it, I, I would say sooner than later, I mean, and that's just less hassle for y'all. That's all.
So, August thirtieth, are we doing a work session? And before that, we go and meet to listen to the decibels?
I don't know if that's enough time to-
Let's go, let's, let everybody go out and take a look, and then at the next meeting, we'll set it. There's no hurry.
No, but, um, so the next meeting, we're gonna sit here and have another discussion?
No, we can determine, after everybody goes out and listens with the police department, we can determine-
We are not bringing this back to the August twenty-eighth meeting, correct? Seven August?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
No.
I'd say we need to bring it back to September tenth, and by then, we need to go ahead and have the decibels listened to and stuff like that.
That, that would be fine.
September tenth?
Yeah, that meeting. 'Cause then Alderman Bangle will be, actually be able to be present, 'cause she would be by phone if we did it on the twenty-seventh.
So, not have a separate meeting?
I feel we should have a separate meeting, but do, do, can we do a vote on that, to have a separate meeting? Just because I don't wanna be inundated with this situation on the tenth, if we have more public comment.
I, I'd make the suggestion, we have a work session at six PM on September the seventeenth.
Say this again? Oh, on Tuesday, September the-
Tuesday, September seventeenth, six PM work session.
I second it.
At City Hall.
Motion and second is their discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Well, I second it, but I don't remember the date again.
September seventeenth, seven, six PM. City Hall to discuss noise.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we have anything else coming before us concerning that item at this time? Let's, uh, go, item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven is a discussion of capital purchase for Public Works. In response to the board's desire for sidewalks to be better and regularly manicured, Matt Montane, our Director of Public Works, is seeking to purchase a grasshopper mower with an edging attachment at a cost of nine thousand seven hundred dollars. This equipment will provide more efficient cleanup, and it can be purchased through the state contract without the need to see bids. Staff is requesting that the funds budgeted in the nineteen-twenty Street Division budget be redirected for the purchase of this equipment. There's amendments included in your packet, and we're happy to answer any kind of questions.
Okay, is there more heavy questions about this? Where's the money coming from here?
Uh, it's gonna be redirected from the Public Works Department, within the Streets Division. But because it's a capital, it's there, but because it's a capital request, it's over five thousand dollars. Generally speaking, I, I tend to bring those to the board.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, is this adopting a resolution, or we just agreed to a capital purchase for Public Works? Is that what the motion should be?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, motion second is their discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bangle.
Alderman Bangle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is consideration of board to adopt an order to amend Section seventy dash one eighty-four, streets upon which the operation of tractor-trailers is prohibited, exceptions of Article five, Chapter seventy. At the request of Mike Janess, the President of the Gant Neighborhood Association, he has requested that tractor-trailers be prohibited on Second Street between Park Avenue and Trent Boulevard. Staff has reviewed the request and found it to be reasonable and consistent with prohibited traffic on portions of adjacent streets. Tractor-trailers will still be permissible on Second Street between First Street and Park Avenue to allow access to the vault center and other commercial businesses that are located in that particular area. Happy to answer any kind of questions you may have.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Section seventy dash one eighty-four, streets upon which the operation of tractor-trailers is prohibited, exceptions of Article five, Chapter seventy.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bangle?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, uh, ordinance to start. I, um, Alderman Odom?
Um, yes, sir. Mr. Alderman Kinsey called and asked if we would consider reappointing him to the ECC? Is that correct?
Eastern Carolina Council.
Eastern Carolina Council.
Second.
Is that a motion? Yes, sir.
Second, is that motion?
Second.
I have motion and second is their discussion. CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any other appointments?
No, sir.
Uh-huh. Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Astor? Yes, I have, um, I'd like to appoint Mr. Peter Dillon to the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. And also, I'm not sure if this is an appointment or not, but I've received an email, maybe somebody else said, as well, Donna Baker is the owner of Master for Dog Training, and she has requested to be considered for the Dangerous Dog Appeal Board. Now, I sent this to the Chief of Police, I'm assuming that he would be in touch with her. I'm not exactly sure, Mr. City Manager, what the process is for this.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, the, the board appoints that entire panel.
Okay.
What I, what we need to do is do it in an organized fashion, because there are different criteria for the various members. And we can make sure that we don't double up on a member and leave one blank. So, if we can just get that name to the clerk, then between now and next meeting, we can sort out and, and get a number to the board as to who we still need to field that team.
Okay, all right. Do you already have that information?
Yes.
Or did I give you, Mr. I, I'll send it to you. Okay, anything else? That's everything, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Margie Dunn to the Planning and Zoning Board to replace Carol Williams' position.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
That's it?
Alderman Bangle.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Maria Cho to the Redevelopment Commission. I know you can't believe this, but a year has expired already, so, um, she will now, we have stagger terms, so now it'll be a five-year term. Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Do we have an attorney's report tonight?
That's important, Mayor.
City manager's report?
Just a real quick update. At the last meeting, you may recall, there was an ordinance amendment on the city-sponsored events that was tabled. We have reached out, and the clerk spoke with the Duff, Duff Fest organizers. They've elected to leave this event in June, so it's not necessary for us to consider an amendment to move this back to May unless the board so chooses. So, that's the reason why it wasn't on your agenda tonight, and unless I hear otherwise, it will not come back on. But just wanted to follow up on items that were tabled.
Okay, uh, anything else? Anything else? Okay. At this time, uh, new business, starting with Alderman, I don't know.
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor, I have a noise, and I'm, I'm just kidding. I do want to make the public aware of some upcoming meetings for karts. Some of you may or may not know, but we do have public transportation in the city and the county. It is open for anybody that wants to ride. As being a member of the MPO, there is a subcommittee of that board that has been looking at karts and our public transportation system, and how we can make some improvements. The county recently provided some additional funding at the request of some of our industrial facilities, at Industrial Park, to provide an external route that we currently do not have. Hard to believe, we have public transportation in the county, and we didn't have a route that went to our industrial park. But nonetheless, uh, there's a lot of work going on in the background. But there is a series of meetings that will be taking place over the next several weeks, and, uh, there's a lot of them, so for the sake of time, and I know everybody's ready to get out of here, I'm just gonna read the ones that are taking place within the city limits, but if anybody wants to know about the other ones, I'll be happy to share them with you. And I'm gonna get these over to, uh, our PO, and maybe she can put a, um, a Facebook message out to, uh, our contingencies. The first one that will be held in the city of New Bern will be at the Craven Community College in the Nowman Room. It will be August the twenty-sixth, and it says ten to eight. And I'm assuming that's ten AM to eight PM. The next one will be on August the twenty-seventh, at the Craven Public Library on Johnson Street, from three to seven. And then the next one within the city limits will be at RCS on September the fourth, from nine to eleven. And also on September the fourth, there will be one at Craven Terrace, from two to four. And that is all that will be within the city limits. So, that meeting is for the public to provide input on route stops. So, if you'd like to see changes, additions, deletions, um, I will tell you that there is very low participation rate in those meetings typically, so if you have an interest, you'll probably have a good shot at getting your voice heard, 'cause there probably won't be a lot of people there.
Alderman Odom, could, we have the clerk send that information to us?
Sure.
I'd like to have that to send out to-
And that's all, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. Um, just wanna share this. Um, the Craven County Register of Dees Office, um, has, have a program, and it's pertaining to our vets, our veterans, and it's a Thank a Vet program. It's where the veteran comes in and, uh, records their DD two fourteen, or those that may already have their DD two fourteen on file. Um, and the Register of Dees Office administers a photo ID, and the card says Thank a Vet. And the vet, the veterans can take that card to the local businesses around New Bern. I think there's, right now, it's about seventy businesses that's on that list and receive a discount. And I, I know that, I just wanna thank, with the current list I have, I just wanna thank two of our board members who are participating in this program, um, so thanks to them. So, if you know a veteran, just, you know, give them that information, let them go to the Craven County Register of Dees Office, get their Thank a Vet card, so they can get their percentages, their, and bonuses, different, or businesses have different, uh, programs running from five percent up to twenty percent. So, I just wanted to share that, and that's through Craven County Register of Dees Office.
Uh, Ms., would they be able to distribute that and put that on Facebook, so we can repost it and let everybody know? I think that'd be a great way.
Yes. Secondly, um, I, there's been two incidents, crime-related incidents within Ward Five, and, um, I just, one resulted in, um, a young man, uh, losing his life. And I just want to say thank you to the Chief and his staff for the service that they provide to our citizens here in the city. I do know the two officers that responded to the incident at the Beach Grove Mobile Home Park. I just wanna thank those officers for their commitment and their, I mean, their faithfulness to the cause of trying to administer to this young man life-saving measures. But unfortunately, this gentleman succumbed, and I just, his name was Mister, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it yet right, but I think it's, um, I'm just gonna give his last name.
Mister Wright.
Uh, Mister, I think it's Jaz, Jazelman Wright.
Right.
So, my sincere sympathy goes out to his family. And also, another incident was, I just want to thank, um, the officers that's here tonight, and your staff, and your chief, for the precautionary measures you took at the lockdown at JT Barber School. I just want to thank you for that, for serving this city, and serving our citizens, and protecting us. I had one more thing. Oh, um, I just want to thank, um, Mr. Stevens for coming out to Pleasant Hill for National Night Out. It was really a pleasure to see him there. He tries to come out every year, but I just wanted to thank him, so make sure he can show up next year.
I, I don't make it to all of them. I tried that my first year, I made it to thirteen out of about twenty, and I, I ran myself ragged. It's impossible to make it to all of them.
I understand.
You're lucky if you could make it to about five or six. I think, Mayor, how many did you make it to this year?
That's safe.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, and you run quick.
And last, I just want to thank Matt and, uh, the Mayor for meeting with me, um, over in Ward Five to go and look at some of the issues I have over there pertaining to the drainage. It's a lot of work to be done over there, and I know it's gonna take a concerted effort for us to get some of those problems resolved, so I just wanna thank y'all, thank the city staff as well.
We'll recheck it in a couple, three weeks.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Astor? Yes, um, I too would like to thank the police department for National Night Out, it was great. I had, I could've made all six, but you had me scheduled from Old Town to Evans Mill, and then back into town and back over, so I made five out of the six, but it was a, it was a wonderful night. I really enjoyed the opportunity to see all my friends, the police officers and firefighters, and, uh, talk to my neighbors, and it was a great event. Thank you very much. Do, uh, is it Mater Jones or Deputy Chief Jones? Which one?
Your preference, sir.
Would you come up for a minute, please? I just have a question for you. The incident that occurred at the National Guard Armory, did we ever find out the reason why the gentlemen were out there recording the National Guard Armory?
Uh, it's my understanding, they were doing what they call a First Amendment audit, and they were exercising their legal right to be in a public place and, and record, record video.
Okay, well, I, I'm all for the Constitution and protecting our constitutional rights. And I believe everyone, we should make sure that everyone has the right to do whatever the Constitution says they should do. However, I want to let you know that your officers did a great job handling that. Your officers are not lawyers. If so, they'd be making more than fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. They did what they thought they were supposed to do in protecting our National Guardsmen from what could've been a threat. And I'm gonna leave it at that, but you're being, as far as I'm concerned, the bad thing about this is, is that there was, you probably have five cars on the street and three of them are out there dealing with this mess. You know, so you guys, as far as I'm concerned, did their job. They got a telephone call about a possible threatening situation. They went out there, the people were not cooperating at all with them. And I appreciate the efforts that they made. Again, they're not lawyers and they don't have a lawyer sitting in the backseat of the car, so they did what they thought was right, and I think it was right as well.
We appreciate that.
I just want to make sure that you understand that I, and I think most of the board here agrees, cause I've talked with a lot of them, that we stand behind your officers.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have nothing else.
Alderman Best?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to repeat with Alderman Best what she said about the work that the Police Department does for the individual that lost his life. He's actually the brother to one of my good friends, so I do commend the police force on what you guys do. Also, I really enjoyed myself at National Night Out, and I just love the fact that we do this. I know it is national, but some people don't have to participate. I do want more of my ward to participate, but I just, it's a great way to see policing and I really enjoyed it. I took my kids out this year and they had fun dancing with the firemen and the police officers, so thank you for all that you guys do for our city, and that's it.
You had firemen dancing?
Yes. We had, I forgot his name. Mister, was it Officer Williams? I think it was. Oh, he was getting down.
Alderman Bingle.
Okay, I know y'all have been here a long time, but you're gonna have to bear with me, cause you know-
Motion to adjourn?
I have a second. I'm busy in my ward. I'd like to start off with the, giving direction and trying to change a zoning or take away a special use permit. For the last year and a half, maybe more, we've been talking about the whole, I hate to even use the word Airbnb situation, because really, if we have to do a lesson right now, Airbnb is nothing more than a marketing tool. It's a company called Airbnb where you can market your home to rent it out on a short-term basis. Whether you live there or you don't live there, there's also companies like HomeAway, whatever. This has become an issue in our residential neighborhoods. I've been aware of it from the minute I filed to seek this office, and I've been working to try to resolve it in the best manner for our residents. Because I believe in, you know, that neighborhoods should be protected, that residents, you know, you buy a home, you invest your life savings, what have you, into that neighborhood. So I've been approached by a group of residents who asked, could we remove the special use designation from our zoning in the residential neighborhoods? And by doing that, it would remove the ability of someone's home becoming a bed and breakfast. Currently, right now, and it's very confusing, so I'm gonna try to explain it. If you live in the home, and this only applies to historic districts, okay, historic districts. If you live in the home and you rent out more than one room in your house, under our current zoning laws, you have to apply for a special use permit and go through the steps of providing parking either onsite or offsite within six hundred feet. You know, you have to go through health, life safety, fire department, health department, all of that. You have to go through that and complete all these steps and go before the Board of Adjustment, go before the Board of Aldermen to get a special use permit. We, I've found out from the city attorney that we can remove that designation from the residential neighborhoods. So everybody, basically, that's north of Broad Street in the R, R District, R six, R eight, R ten. And by removing the ability to get a special use permit, we don't have to go through what we've been going through. I will caution you that if somebody owns a home, a resident, but does not live there, so it's a rental house for them, we still cannot stop somebody from renting that house out on a short-term basis, so by the night, by the week, whatever. That, we haven't been able to overcome that yet. Still waiting to see with Asheville and Raleigh. Am I saying all this correctly, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
So what I, I'm asking this board to do is to give direction to the city attorney to bring back a proposal that we would vote on, on, at the September tenth meeting to remove the special use permit in our zones within historic districts. Comments?
Mr. Bingle?
Grandfather the ones that already is.
Okay, yes, you would grandfather. Anybody who's already gotten the permit and has, you know, gone through the process, they are grandfathered in.
To be able to-
Continue.
On the Airbnb, the-
Well, the B and B, that is correct. You could not take that away. They would be grandfathered in. Now, let me say, by starting this process tonight, that doesn't mean everybody in the neighborhoods can run down to the permit office and start applying to be a B and B. That's why I want to start this process tonight.
What's the conversation on the other side?
Well, there'll be a public hearing. There'll be, again, this is just starting the process. The resolution would come back to this board at the next meeting. We would vote, it would have to go then. It would be a public process, it would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. They would have public comment, then it would have to come back to us for a final vote. So there is, this doesn't change it. This starts the process.
Can I make a motion that you get one issue every quarter?
Yeah.
I'm a-
Second.
Yeah, could, yeah, cause I, I mean, I would have to, cause I'm hearing it from the real estate side on what's going on in that area.
Alright, but again, I'm, it's my job to listen, and I, I try to listen to the residents. The, our residential neighborhoods are the value of our city, and keeping them strong and healthy is what is important to me. I, I believe in businesses. Now, there's plenty of bed and breakfasts in the C two. We got them on Pollock Street and other commercial areas. They would still be able to operate in commercial zones where we have mixed, commercial and residential. But in the pure R eight, R six, R ten, we have some, there's some concerns in these neighborhoods that people now are just buying up these houses to make them bed and breakfast, and it really changes the dynamics of a neighborhood. The mayor can tell you, he's probably sent me no less than a dozen emails from across the country about what this is doing to neighborhoods across the country. And, you know, it's just a way for us to continue to protect our neighborhoods. Again, it's only the historic district. It would be the downtown historic district and the Riverside historic district that this would impact. Again, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't need to proceed with that.
Just direction from the board, this just simply puts a resolution on the agenda to decide to start the process or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would want to have, so does that mean on the tenth, we're gonna have a conversation from both sides?
It'll be a resolution to decide, do you wanna adopt the resolution to start the process or not?
To start the process of having public meetings and-
Yes, exactly. This is great.
Oh, that's easy.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, is everybody else sound good with that?
Yeah, so can I just make a motion that we start this process?
Sure.
So if she makes a motion and we agree, so then that alleviates September tenth?
No, ma'am.
No, 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 it's gotta still come back September tenth. But I'm making the motion that I ask the city attorney, that we ask the, he doesn't wanna do it if none of us agree. But ask the city attorney to bring back a resolution at our September tenth meeting to start the process of changing the zoning on that side of the road.
I'll second it.
Wait, to start, to change or to-
To remove the special-
To go through the process, meaning public hearing and all of that?
By statute in our ordinance, we have to go through a long process, but you started by a resolution expressing your desire to start the process.
And you're saying, she's saying, you probably wouldn't wanna go through if there wasn't enough people to agree?
Yeah, if I go draft you all the work and you don't even wanna think about it, then no need to waste, no need to waste the effort.
Okay, so I probably need a little bit more-
Hey, wait a minute. Motion and second, is there any other questions, concerns? Alderman Harris, you could-
It's okay if you vote no. It's September tenth, it's perfectly fine.
Okay.
The question is, do you wanna, do you wanna have a discussion about it?
Uh, yeah, right now? No.
Do you wanna have a discussion? You've got to draw up the ordinance to have the discussion.
Resolution.
Yes, they're the resolution.
I just wanna be able to hear both sides, that's it, before I vote to actually say no more.
But you're still gonna hear, because we still have to go through the process.
Okay, so I'm gonna agree to this motion for us to start the process September tenth.
So you can talk about it on the tenth?
Yes.
Right, it has nothing to do with voting yes or no.
Okay.
It's just that you're willing to hear both sides of it.
Yes, perfect.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Thank you. The next thing, Mr. City Attorney, I've had several complaints downtown about the ticketing of vehicles more than twelve to eighteen inches away from the curb. There seems to be a lot of confusion about that. I would like for you at our next meeting, or maybe if we could massage our ordinance to say you have to stay within the lines, not twelve inches, whatever, just in the hash marks. So if we could do that, that would be helpful, because again, it's another problem I have, Alderman Harris.
I actually got a complaint that we ran an article in the Sun Journal that was not favorable on this.
It was misleading.
It was misleading, just, we're just boasting about all the money we made and stuff, so.
Can I ask you a question? Who designs the parking passes that hang from the mirror?
Mr. J R.
Is there any way possible, we could use a sticker in the future instead of the handicap placard?
We could look at that. We could look at that if you're interested.
Parking passes?
Let me tell you that the reason some people didn't want the, they wanted the hangers is because they have a different car or they change or something, you know?
I understand that, but my wife keeps getting tickets because she, the thing falls off the mirror, you know, so, I mean, it, it just, just thought maybe a sticker on the back glass so the police officer could walk by and see it or something like that.
The ordinance requires that there be a hang, it be a hanging iron, so we could, I mean, we can go to the attorney. Redraft it, sure.
I'll just keep paying the taxes.
Okay, so that's, I, I need, if you can do that for me, I would greatly appreciate it. And I too want to thank the police officers. I thought National Night Out, it was great. The only thing, it was really hot. It would be really nice if we could find some more air-conditioned venues that we could go into. It was really hot out there. Woo! And I don't know how your guys did it, but they did a great job. And it's so nice to see our fire department and E N S. and everybody coming together. It's, it's really, really great. And that's all I have.
I hate to bring you out.
Hold on a fort.
I got one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Mister Foster, can you come and give us an update on Kidsville, please?
Well, I'm happy to say that we're gonna have a ribbon cutting on Friday, August twenty-third, at ten A M. at Kidsville, so we hope everyone can attend, and we'll open the playground at that time.
Hey, what's, Union Point docks, where are we at with those? We just waiting on?
We're, we're working through the evaluation processes theme right now on that.
How, how is it coming with the pickets? I mean, what percentage left, or is it almost completed?
Well, I'll say this, we've got over thirteen hundred pickets. Thirteen hundred pickets are available. We sold several hundred of those pickets. So I anticipate we'll be selling those pickets for a while. And we're happy to sell them. Give us a call at Parks and Recreation.
Yes, buy a picket.
We need a closed session tonight.
That's right.
Thank for coming forward, Board of Aldermen at this time.
May I adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Meeting is adjourned.